Thanks for coming to your city council meeting. We have our Congresswoman Dexter on the line. Pretty exciting. Thank you so much, Congresswoman, for taking time out of your busy schedule. We're going to get to you pretty quick, but first we're going to hear from a couple of folks, including someone who I believe knows you were coming and wishes to speak sort of to the topic. So that's how it's going to go. So first, we're all going to turn off our cell phones. Second, we're going to acknowledge that the land where we do our work has been home to others long before my ancestors came. As we gather today, we've respectfully acknowledged that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nez Perce, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who steward this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and are committed to working together for a more just and sustainable future. We're also going to remember that we live in Oregon, a sanctuary state, and that our local officers will not assist federal immigration officers who may come to our town. Then we're going to say the Pledge of Legions. Please join me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abigail, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. Now is the time for the business from the audience. No person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct during this time. There should be no audience demonstrations such as applause, cheering, display, signs, or conduct disruptive. Such conduct may be the cause for immediate termination of business from the audience by the mayor. No person shall address council without first being recognized by the mayor. Please do state your full name for the record when it is your turn. We're going to start with Mark Zanmiller, followed by Megan Saunders.
So nice to see you all. Thanks for your service. It's fun to be back. So I am one of the co-chairs of the Dark Skies Gorge Group, and I'm here to encourage and support the inclusion of dark sky protections in the outdoor lighting sections of the new planning code that you'll review tonight. It is our understanding that detailing the content of the section comes for later. The decision tonight is really, is this an important one or not? And we ask you to say, yeah, this is a pretty easy, important one to include. Dark sky implementations improve the environment for both people and nature, and I like it because it's an example of something that really can and should be win-win. I mean, no one wants to shine a light up in the sky. They want to be good neighbors. The ducks like to fly over and back and forth. It's just a win-win thing. And I'm confident that strong lighting code can be implemented without negatively impacting either safety or affordability. You know, this is something that we should be able to do. I would be happy to provide additional dark sky information, resources, links, and pointers to adopted models that could help with the current planning code process in Hood River. And if you'd like to continue this discussion or receive our monthly emails or just get a cup of coffee, just let me know and we can chat about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Megan and then Alicia.
Hi, Mayor and Councilors. Megan Saunders. Nice to see you all. It is weird to actually be nervous on this side of the rocket. But I'm here to talk about the development code update and the module for you're looking at tonight. I want to thank you all for taking on what is a major undertaking. And I know it's very important, obviously, to make sure that we're meeting state legal code and also to have clear and objective standards, as that makes it easy for anyone who is applying for anything to know what they're getting into. But I also wanted to ask you, as you look at it tonight and into the future, I know this is an ongoing project, that you please look at it with the eye towards what can be done to reduce barriers and/or promote the development of more housing in Hood River, especially more diverse housing types like triplexes, cottages, multifamily. These housing types and more housing units in general, as you all are aware, are critical to the health and the future of our community and economy, making space for young people and young families, lower and middle income workers, and the full breadth of our community members to be able to stay here or move here as needed. Some specific things for tonight's review. I did just want to say I'm very supportive of planning commission's recommendation to reduce parking minimums to one space or less for all housing unit types. Parking spaces come with both a really high land cost and a high fiscal cost, and they continue to emphasize a car-centric development pattern instead of a people-centric development pattern. I'd also ask you to look at the landscaping standards, especially with regards to middle housing provisions that actually require larger landscaped areas than the base zones that they would be in, which creates a distance center for that type of housing that is, of course, a valuable resource we'd like to see promoted. And then overall, given Hood River's very limited open land supply, it's important to promote more productive use of our land overall, especially in our three commercial zones where we can do higher density. And so I would suggest maybe looking at some minimum density standards in those zones to help foster additional housing units and ensure efficient use of our limited land. So thank you for your time tonight. Really great to see you all. I'm also happy to talk anytime. Have a good night. I'll be.
Thanks, Meg. Alicia, I see you're here to address the topic that comes later in the meeting. You're welcome to get her done now, or you're welcome to speak at that time. Your preference. Great.
Hello, Mayor Blackburn and council members. I think you all know me, but for the record, I am Alicia Sherburne, the Executive Director of Big River Community Land Trust, which is a local nonprofit working on permanently affordable housing here in the gorge. I really just wanted to kind of extend a thank you. I know you've been looking at ordinance 2094, which does a few things that's beneficial to our projects in kind of creating those SDC exemptions that extend up to housing projects serving households at 120 AMI and below. This is really a huge thing for us as we're trying to serve both low and middle income here in Hood River. And I know we're not the only ones. I see this benefiting a lot of developers, and my hope is that it'll kind of break down some barriers and open up opportunities for other people to come in and provide a wider range of housing. So just wanted to extend thanks on that, and we really appreciate your partnership and looking forward on housing. On that note, I just wanted to quickly give you an update on Tucker Road since I'm here. I should be doing a final walkthrough in about two weeks, which I'm really excited about, and we're hoping to get our certificate of occupancy right around that time. I am also working with our first buyer, and they're getting financing figured out right now. So my hope is, as we roll into 2026, that we will have our first home sale, and I look forward to celebrating that with you, as you really made this possible with the gift of that land. So thank you.
Super. Thanks, Alicia, for your work. Ben.
Representative Dexter here.
Online.
He's on, he says his camera's off.
Her camera's off, and she's here. Great. Representative Dexter, I'm glad you're here tonight to support Hood River with respect to ICE and to keep our community safe. Additionally, Representative Dexter is sponsoring Bill 876, which accuses Israel of genocide. This creates a permission structure that leads to violence against Jews. We have a little Jewish community here in Hood River with a school, youth group, prayer. Events are not published. We keep it private for security. In Portland, my synagogue has become a fortress. Security trucks block the circular driveway. We have bollards against ramming attack. The first armed guard is stationed at a locked gate with a fence. Key card permits entry to the courtyard, where a second armed guard patrols. Then a key card opens the locked door to the building, which is manned by a greeter, who's actually a congregant trained in security. Are we overreacting? On Friday, Parky Synagogue in New York was under siege by a mob in kafias and masks, shouting "death, death" to the IDF. Jews were trapped inside. Eventually, police opened a path. Eventually, police opened a path. The crowd heckled and jeered the Jews as they passed. The mob shouted, "There is only one solution." What solution are we talking about here? They're calling for the final solution in public in New York outside of synagogue. In 2024, my wife took our daughter to a reggae concert at the Aladdin Theater in Portland. The musician was Machishahu, a Jew. The theater was vandalized. His name was taken off the marquee for security. To enter, they had to run a gauntlet of people wearing masks and kafias pressing against a police barricade chanting "Free, Free Palestine." With Bill 876, Congresswoman Dexter encourages attacks on Jews. If the IDF is genocidal, in her morally inverted world, then calling for death is commendable. Representative Dexter is part of the anti-Zionism movement, where in polite society, it's okay to attack Jews. Anti-Semitism is out, anti-Zionism is in. This is why the Hood River Jewish community was forced offline. This is why in Portland, we meet behind armed guards. When we host a leader who promotes Bill 876 that manifestly creates a permission structure to attack Jews, you need to know. And now you do. Good to see you. I mean, I'm surprised that you are here. I'm surprised that you're here for more than this speaking.
Thank you, Ben.
I have 15 seconds.
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. That brings us to Congresswoman. Thank you so much for taking your valuable time to be with us. It's a pleasure to see you.
Thank you so much. It is really my pleasure and honor, as always. And I don't think it's appropriate for me to take city council time to address that. I certainly will have my team follow up with them so we can speak. I just want to say I don't think that was a fair articulation of what happened, but I will take that offline because I want to be respectful of everyone's time here.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Hood River City Council. I am Congresswoman Maxine Dexter. I very proudly represent Oregon's 3rd District, including your and our incredible community. I'm grateful to join you again, though I wish it were under better circumstances. Over the past several weeks, as you know very deeply and, I think painfully, my office has been hearing about concerning increase in ICE enforcement in the district. We've heard it from families directly, loved ones detained, communities like Hood River shaken. And I just want to be really clear, like, this is not, these are not the worst of the worst as our administration claims. These are business owners, parents, children, citizens, neighbors who contribute to the richness and the security and stability of our community. Let me just be clear. These policies are not making us safer. Instead, they're tearing families apart, fueling fear, and violating our core values. And I cannot, we cannot build a better community or country through cruelty. These tactics are unjust, ineffective, and immoral. I've been meeting with local nonprofits and leaders in our immigrant community to plan for how we protect our neighbors when they need it most. And together, we are building networks of support to ensure that families know their rights and aren't left to face these challenges alone. And yet, we are not yet meeting this moment. And I think it is by design almost impossible to meet the moment with the certainty of the chaos that it is requiring of us. There is so much fear and so much cruelty that I think folks are really struggling with how to respond. We are not a country of laws right now. We are not following the rule of law. In Oregon's 3rd, my team includes two bilingual caseworkers who are dedicated to serving our immigrant families. If someone you know has been detained, please contact our office immediately. I would say if you're seeing someone being detained, the PERC hotline is the first call without question, and we are absolutely there to support. Here's what we've done so far to help. We are securing releases for individuals unlawfully detained. We've tracked down individuals personally in the office, conducted wellness checks to ensure access to medications, sent letters, and made direct interventions, including visits to the Canadian border, Thorne Dale CBP facility, El Salvador, Northwest Ice Processing Center in Tacoma. We are not standing by, and I'm committed to showing up. I know it's not enough, but I stand with you in solidarity in this time of extraordinary harm and fear. Every day, we will continue to fight to protect our immigrant neighbors from inhumane enforcement. And this is about who we are in Oregon and who and what we want to believe and how we will lead with compassion, equity, and justice. And I just, I really wanted to come because this is such a painful time for so many, and I want you to know that we are not standing by waiting for others to take action. We want to be taking action with you. So please consider us partners, thought partners, action partners, and let us know how we can stand with you. Thank you.
Thanks so much for being with us. Any comments or questions for our Congresswoman? Let us, then Anna.
Thank you, Congresswoman, for being here today. I appreciate your partnership. I am also hoping that we can have the contact information of the two caseworkers to ensure that we are giving that information to our community partners as we know that ICE is in our community and has taken so far eight community members that we have seen. So if you can capture or give that contact information to us, that would be great to be able to pass it along. I would also encourage that you all continue at a federal level pressing for prohibiting ICE to enter what are known as those sensitive areas, such as schools, places of worship, the courts, healthcare entities. As we know, those are now no longer protected zones, and I'm certain you have heard of, most recently, a 17-year-old high school student in McMinnville that was taken and is a US citizen. In addition to that, we know that there are individuals that are not necessarily ICE agents and are wearing masks pretending to be ICE agents. So more or stronger language and protections around individuals for that. Lastly, we know that the federal government continues to use surveillance systems such as flock cameras. We do not have flock cameras here in the gorge. We do have other areas close by that may, so ensuring that that information is protected at a state level and cannot cross into other states, as we have seen how that only adds or perpetuates to issues and folks continuing to be detained because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will text you. We have a one-pager, two-sided, that has at the very top our caseworker who is bilingual in Spanish and our field representative, both of whom have been working with my DC office. I'll make sure that you have our office number as well. And that also has a list of the ways that we can be helpful. Please feel free to distribute that to the community. And Mayor Blackburn has my number. I welcome any of you to have it on council. So please, Mr. Mayor, feel free to share that number with anyone on the council who wishes to have it. I want to be, you know, a resource, and please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Anna.
I see this, actually, your support for local elected leaders with those caseworkers' names was included in our meeting materials. Thank you very much for that. And as a follow-up to Councilwoman Rivera's comment, I was wondering if that might be something that we can use and maybe link to our website. We have the community resources or maybe under the current news, "You Belong" page, and maybe that's something that I can check with staff about. But if it's okay with you, if we link that, that would be, I was wondering if that would be okay. And then I'm wondering if there are additional local resources that we could also maybe link, if that's the Hood River Latino Network or the Nextdoor, Inc. And then my last question for you is, your name is on HR 4456, which was introduced on July 16th, that proposed that no federal funds be made available to ICE or made available to ICE be used to carry out civil immigration enforcement activities or to detain transport US citizens. And I'm just curious, you know, what was your intention in supporting this bill? What's the status? And how does this impact individuals who have started the citizenship process but aren't US citizens yet? Like, what's going on with that?
Yeah, and so, Madam Counselor, I think there are many bills right now that have been filed that I am cosponsoring. The Clear ID Act is another one asking or requiring that all ICE officers have to expose their face, that they have to have identification displayed, that their vehicles need to be marked. The use of federal resources to detain citizens should not be necessary. I think it's frankly absurd that we are in this place where anyone who is legally within the confines of the United States has First Amendment rights, including to due process. And we are clearly seeing that our federal dollars are being used not just to deny due process, but to, in fact, as we've already heard, to kidnap and traumatize citizens as well. So I certainly do not support that, but we are in a time of extraordinary ideological divide, and those bills are not being brought to the floor for a vote by our speaker. And so I would just encourage the community, if you have bills that you support, to please write our office and make sure that we know of your support, because it does help us when we get outreach. Certainly, if you agree with our positions, it still helps to hear from you. That helps us, such as when I went to El Salvador. It was in no small part because our community was demanding that I do something and to stand up for due process. So we do listen, and I would just encourage the community to reach out. But as of right now, none of those bills, even though they are necessary and important, are being moved forward.
Thank you. I just, one last kind of general comment. I know I've heard you say before that letters, emails, phone calls to your office are on specific topics. Those are the currency that establish your credibility as our elected representative when you're speaking to other representatives in DC. And I just think, you know, in general, and what I want to say to the people that live in our community is that if you hear from 100,000 of us in your district that say that we want more to be done to prevent ICE from terrorizing our communities, that'll reinforce the legislation that you've introduced. So I think it's kind of silly, but the idea of, like, you know, organizing a good old-fashioned letter-writing campaign where, you know, you can go to the floor and dump a bag of letters that says, "These all are saying that we're not okay with what's happening." I think that that might be something proactive that our city can do, is, you know, just tell people, "Reach out to you." And that's where, if we can link this resource with the caseworker and the field rep and, you know, contact information for you, that would be really great if we can do that.
And if I may, I just, I can't thank you enough for the partnership and for the advocacy. And I certainly encourage the city council, like I have been to all of our cities who are being impacted right now, to lead with courage and integrity and standing up for our community. It's an extraordinarily tough time, I recognize, to be in city government. Your resources are always limited, and your time and your efforts are appreciated to standing up for our community members. And so we need all levels of government to work together. And so if there is a letter campaign, I absolutely am committed to taking your voices to the floor.
Doug. Thank you for being here, Congresswoman Dexter. Just building upon everything I've heard so far, you know, it's great to hear about the hotline, you know, the contact with caseworkers, et cetera, et cetera. Are there other things that you're seeing other cities within your district do from a proactive standpoint beyond that, that you would think we could benefit from as we are doing a lot of scrambling and due diligence to try to understand what other cities are doing and what we can do at a city level?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm always happy to engage, you know, in a more directed way about what other cities are doing in my district, outside of my district. I have been working closely with the leaders from Chicago. Chicago has been extremely effective in organizing rapid response networks in their communities. PERC is able to do an extraordinary job with organizing, but I think we could do with more sort of local, hyper-local rapid response and community response, improving our willingness of business, the business community to stand with our immigrant neighbors and not support ICE agents, frankly, with, you know, different, whether it's food for lunches or, you know, these folks are following orders. So I do not in any way wish to demonize the people who are being put in the middle, but there are levels of pressure that can be felt. And, you know, some folks are joining ICE, you know, for certain reasons, and others have been there a long time and did not join to do this kind of work. So I want to be, I want to honor that there are a spectrum of people who are caught in tough positions, but making it tougher, I think, is strategic, and it's certainly important in Chicago. I don't know that any of our neighbors have done that. I know the city of Portland has taken some action as a council in stabilizing or lifting up our sanctuary status and what they are committed to doing in the Portland Police and whether they are, you know, how they're responding. I do think that there are some, you know, even if it doesn't feel legally binding in a way, I think that statement of solidarity is important. Sensitive areas are not as protected, as the counselor said. And unfortunately, I think the city can be helpful in helping make sure that our churches, hospitals, businesses understand that they do not have to let people pass the public foyer and entries, that there are that there are other ways. And so the city can sort of, with chambers of commerce and others, I think, be helpful in organizing. So happy to go through more, but we can learn a lot from what other cities are doing. And in Chicago in particular, has been very effective.
That's, that's encouraging to hear you say that. In fact, I grew up just outside of Chicago, lived in Chicago for many years. Couple of weeks ago, when discussing ideas of what we might be able to do here and who we can borrow from, I did bring up the Protecting Chicago Initiative and executive order there and whatnot. So good to know that at least on the right track. Appreciate that insight.
Thank you.
Grant. Representative Dexter, thanks for speaking with us, taking the time today and for your support in our collective action as the City of Hood River. We're here to discuss more recently, this recent action and events regarding ICE. But there's, there, there will always be something going on, be it this, be it another issue that comes up. Always. And I see this as a bigger systematic potential problem, but we may want to address that you've brought up earlier with bills not, that you've introduced, not being, not being able to move forward in the House of Representatives. In my conversations with people and as a city counselor, I've seen that the ways that trust in institutions can be eroded when ordinary citizens feel that the system is not necessarily systematically working for them or responds to their needs or any of those sorts of systematic failings. In my conversations broadly across the spectrum, there are three actions I've found have broad support that would rebuild trust and would be essential to reforming these things. First one would be eliminating money in politics. That would place the voters above money interests, let's say. Second would be eliminating gerrymandering, actually having participative government and the voters be actually being focused that are involved in that thing. And the third being actual tax reform. So you would have a restructuring of economic fairness in the tax reform. Everybody's playing by the same set of rules, be them an individual family, a corporation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. With those three things in place, you could actually have, I think you could actually have conversations about the issues we brought up tonight, along with the plethora of other issues that come up regularly in your conversations with your peers. Would those, is there space or do you have any inclination on whether those three things would be feasible?
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I certainly don't know if they're feasible immediately, but I think they're critical. The trust in government, the fact that people do not believe that government works or even that it can work, I think, is foundational to what's happening right now. We have gotten into this position as a lack of trust in government has grown exponentially, I think, in, in the last several years, if not decade. We are committed to advocating for transparency, accountability. Publicly financed campaigns is my number one priority for reestablishing voters above special interests. And, you know, we, we cannot earn the trust of our, our people if their voices can be drowned out by those with more power and money. And then corruption across government right now is horrific. We are not a country of laws right now. We are not following the laws. And the government needs to stand in and stand up for the rule of law. So the, the three offers that you make, I think are certainly very important. I think the voters, the power of the people is always greater than the people in power. The power of our constituents to demand better from their government is rising. And that is, again, the currency that I am most responsive to is the voices of my constituents. And so if I am hearing that this is a priority, we absolutely will champion it. And it is in line, alignment with my personal priorities, which is always a very reaffirming place to be.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your hard work and your public service and taking the time to be with us. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Onward.
Exactly.
Next, we have our good friends from the Lions Club. Please come on up.
Okay. Well, you know, it's kind of nice to be, oh, we're Mike Shen from the Lions Club and President of the Lions Foundation. With me is Doug Bone, who's President of our club. So Doug will be speaking here in a second, but it's nice to be here with a positive topic. You know, not that that was, not that bad, but this will be better. So what we've done is we put together a proposal of, of things that we felt as a Lions Club we could do for two parks that we've kind of adopted over the years. And I figured it up that we've invested over $400,000 in those two parks in the last four or five years. So we're still there, still trying to make them better. These are just some smaller items that we'd like to, you know, fill in the gaps, so to speak. So if you wouldn't mind, let me go through these so you understand what we're proposing. Because this didn't come from public works, this came from our club. A lot of observations, especially families in the park with nighttime stuff, which becomes a little more difficult for people to maneuver in the dark. And we've had accidents there. And I know it's a liability issue for the city, but it's also an issue for us is putting that event on. We don't want people getting hurt. Okay? So let me talk about what we're proposing here. First of all, Jackson Park, we would like to install a hundred and six feet of handrail made out of metal that would go around, there's a site, if you, I know you're familiar with it. There's a sidewalk that goes up to the restrooms. Okay. And, but it's steep. Okay. And then it loops around in front of the restrooms. And we've had people struggle with trying to get up that, especially elderly people or anybody with a disability can't do it without help. And with a handrail, I think it would be a big advantage for people to maneuver that incline, but also not fall over the edge, which we've had people fall over the edge and, and go down the hillside, which you don't really want that happening, I'm sure. So it also includes a concrete border for the handrail supports that'll be mounted into this six inch concrete rail that are, that'll go all the way around that corner. And you'll see it. When Doug talks about the, the design here, you'll, you'll get a better idea. We also are wanting to put a twelve foot extension on that sidewalk I was talking about because at the bottom of it, it's a tripping hazard. There's about a three inch lip there and people walk up in the dark and they, they fall over. We've had people fall down, hurt their knees because it, they hit that edge and they fall over. And so we're talking about putting a concrete, feathering it all the way down. So it's, it's ground level and there's no lip there to catch people's feet. Okay. So that's what that is. Or also, there's no bike rack. If you've ever been to the families in the park, there's bikes everywhere, but there's no place to put them. So we're proposing to put a twenty bike, twenty station bike rack up there with a, and then put a concrete mow strip that it sits on. So it'd be three by twelve feet mow strip. And the bike rack is a double bike rack, so it, it takes ten on each side. And, and then the mow strip, obviously it'll make it a lot easier for maintenance to, don't have to move it. We can actually drill into the concrete and mount it permanently into the concrete. But I don't think anybody's going to steal this thing because it probably weighs about 400 pounds. But we can, we can anchor it if you prefer that, and that's not a problem. We also would like to put in a, a motion sensor light and at the restrooms. There's absolutely, it's dark up there and grab, you can, you understand that you saw it up there many times. You can't see anything up there and that we had somebody fall over the edge because they, they missed the sidewalk. They couldn't see it. So if it's a motion sensor, it should be really easy, you know, to, not to be on all the time. But I, we would install that, have an electrician put it on. There's an easy spot for it there. The electricity is already there at the restrooms. So it shouldn't be that expensive to do. And then I talked about the twenty station double sided bike rack. So that's what we're proposing to do. The, the cost estimates, we got cost estimates from Schubach Concrete and from Vinnie Schlosser at Schlosser's for the, for the rail. It comes up to about $15,250 to buy the equipment, those pieces. I'm talking about the rail, the concrete and the labor. Now, these are estimates. There's going to be more detail if you approve this. That'll, that'll kind of fine tune it a little bit. So Man Park, which we just did with all the playground this last spring, as you know, we thought we, there's no bike racks there either. So we're going to put in, first of all, another picnic table is in order. So we're going to pour a twelve by six foot concrete pad and then buy the commercial grade table to put on it. And since there's no shade basically in that park, we're proposing to put the concrete pad over by the evergreens in the shade. So there's at least one table for families to be, you know, a little more comfortable in the heat of the summer. And then two six station bike racks that would be separated by a few feet. And then we would actually put mow strips on those for your maintenance people. And, and there are the, the loops, you've seen the, the looper ones, you understand what I'm talking about? They would be, the two anchors would be in foundation, concrete foundations into the ground. So they're not going to go anywhere, but they're also going to be placed on a mow strip. So it's easier for the maintenance. And that comes to a total of $10,240. So we're looking at almost $26,000, minor stuff compared to what we've done in the past. But these we feel are very important things to, for safety for people and convenience for people. Good for the community, good for the city, good for the Lions, and we're happy to do it. So with that in mind, before you throw questions at us, Doug's the architect of that drawing. So I'm going to let him talk about that a little bit.
Quite simply, it's just a rudimentary drawing of the grounds there. The existing bathroom, we're looking at coming off about twenty five feet to the east side and about ten feet off the sidewalk there, which is about the only really flat surface. It's far enough from the play equipment and also far from the sidewalk that doesn't block any traffic or any restrictions for that. The darker line below the bottom side is the sidewalk area. And if you've obviously been at Jackson Park there, you'll notice that that sidewalk jets in and out in areas when you come out to the west side of that, it actually steps in about eighteen to 24 inches, which if you're in the dark, which it does get dark up there at times, you can walk right off that edge and fall over the sides. So that would be important for that area. At Man Park, the two bicycle racks would be on the, the southeast corner of the, of the playground equipment. It's kind of a barrier too, because if you look at that area, somebody who's crazy enough to drive in there, if you don't know what they're going to do, that gives a barrier to that playground area. So they wouldn't drive through that area. So pretty simple.
Thanks so much for your generous donation, you guys. I've talked to staff about this. I understand it's very in, in rhythm with what we're up to. And this is a welcome donation. You guys have been there for decades and are still here. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a motion in the packet.
Great. Questions? Anybody?
Not a problem to bolt or anchor down the bike racks. You mentioned that.
To do what?
Bolt down the bike racks.
Yeah, it's too bad. It's not a problem. They're made for that. So you just bolt it right into the concrete.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that is cool because we might want to do that. Because having stuff around occasionally, stuff moves about.
Yeah. And that way, you know, if you want to move it, it's just on doing the bolts. I mean, for whatever reason, you could do it.
I don't imagine we want it to move.
Probably not.
That's, that's the, that's the reason why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, we can bolt it down and that's not a problem at all. Yeah.
And then just one other quick one. Based on your schematic, the corner between the existing sidewalk and the playground, I believe the main way that people walk would go right through this proposed bike rack. Is that, if I'm reading this correctly, is that right?
The bike rack is actually ten feet off of the sidewalk to the south. And it's 25 feet off of the building to the east.
Yeah, in, in between.
Yeah, you have the flat area, you have the playground up here, comes down, you have the flat area over here to the side.
Sure.
Come down both sides of that if they were to.
If you'd rather have it at a different location, that's not a problem. This is just what we're proposing. But if you'd like it maybe to go further to the restroom, over to the, to the west, that's fine too.
Yeah, leave that detail. If we agree to that, it could be worked out.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah.
But I know that that area is highly trafficked as well.
Exactly. Yeah, we understand.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Shen, Mr. Bond, thank you for being here. We appreciate your partnership. It sounds like you have been in conversations with staff. What I'd like to better understand is what sort of ongoing maintenance costs would this potentially add? When you, the organization previously donated the play equipment at Man Park. I know that in our budget and our capital improvement projects, we prioritize this project over others to move and reallocate some of those dollars. So I'm curious, what sort of maintenance would this potentially have? What sort of costs would the city have to think about in our next budget session? And then open to continuing these conversations and some of these additional details that have been brought up around what does it look like in having staff involved in that?
Mayor, if I may address that, I think, first of all, the Lions are generously offering to do the installation as well as the, the purchase of the equipment. And so I think the upfront costs for the city are zero or minimal, which I appreciate that is, you're right. In the last piece we had for the Man Park, we had Man Park further down on the list. And therefore we moved things around to make that opportunity when the Lions came to us. I have not had a chance to look at this and see what maintenance would be. I can see probably a motion sensor light probably needs to be maintained or bulbs need to be done. I don't see anything here that looks like major installation or major operation that wouldn't be able to incorporate into our daily work already. But I will definitely check with our Public Works Director on that. He's, I know he and I have just been communicating about this. I sent him a picture of this. So he had that as well tonight, so.
Such a nice drawing.
Yeah. So, but I appreciate that question always. There is always a long term cost. But I think in this particular situation, these are really durable goods that probably will not need a lot of long term maintenance by the city.
That's a good point though. And that brings me to one other thing that I forgot, a very important thing. The stage, we're going to hire a professional person to stain it. It needs to be stained every so often. So we're going to have the whole thing stained. We tried to do some of it ourselves, but it's so high. It's, it's not something I want to do anymore. But, so that's going to be, that'll probably be $50,000 when we do that, just so you know.
Thank you so much for this. And I know that our community appreciates those events that take place. I know that I truly enjoy Families in the Park. I live close to Man Park and so it is nice to go out there and, and check out the new updates that have taken place. And this does make these parks more livable, you know, a sense of place and community. So I do appreciate your partnership. Continue to keep our staff involved in, in all that you do. And we appreciate your partnership.
Speaking of partnerships, can I have one thing, Abigail?
I did not put that in the agenda, but you can certainly bring it up and they might choose to make a decision later.
Yeah, two birds with one stone. Families in the Park, sponsorships. You guys have always been a sponsor of that event. And what that entails is in kind, you just waive the fees for the park. And you become a full fledged partner for the series. We've already hired the bands already. So I'm out seeking sponsorship. So I thought, okay, I'm here. As I ask you about that as well. So again, it's, it's an in kind donation of waiving the fees to use the park. But you've become a full fledged partner anyway. And I think it's good for you guys to be out there. Grant did a great job out there last year. He was out there schmoozing around and.
Good. We'll have it, we'll have it on the discussion. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, there is a motion.
So I, I'm completely open to adding that to this motion if, if others are, are okay with that so that we can just get it done now? Or is that something that we would have to come back at another meeting to discuss?
You mean the sponsor.
The sponsorship, yeah.
There's no reason we would have to.
Right. I think that you are fine doing it tonight. If you want to amend them, you know, there's a motion here or do it in two separate motions. If you would like to like publicly notice that, you could just ask me to put it on our future agenda and I could add it to consent to the next meeting. I think you're, you're fine.
Well, I think Grant was about to make a motion, so I just wanted to interject and add that little piece in here. Any sort of thoughts that folks had prior to doing so?
I'll do the first part. That's already in our packet. I'll move to, we accept the donation of equipment from the Lions for Jackson Park and Man Park. Moved by Paulson.
All second.
Second by Rivera. Discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Lions. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh, we could do the, the, ordinarily, we wouldn't do that in the full council. I would just put it on consent for the future, but, you know, it's your, you may make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, we go ahead and approve, um, or add to the consent agenda, the sponsorship of Families of the Park for the twenty-twenty-six season.
Moved by Cavalieri.
I'll second.
Second by Rivera. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. You're welcome, Lions. That takes us to the Urban Renewal Agenda. Chair subpoena.
Now, call to order the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Uh, any additions or corrections? Well, who, Will's on mine.
Just to be, no agenda additions or corrections.
Uh, is anybody signed up, uh, Abigail or Jen online? Okay? So no business from the audience. Uh, the first, uh, we have on here is the consent agenda, in which we would, uh, I would entertain a motion if anybody wants to make that for the consent agenda, unless there's no corrections to be made.
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
First by Amanda. Second. Second by Ben. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda passes. Regular business items, the contract award for the Heights Streetscape Plan owner's representative, uh, Will, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair subpoena, members of the agency board. Have a contract for your review and approval, uh, authorizing a three-year contract not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an owner's representative for the Heights Streetscape, uh, plan implementation. Um, so an owner's representative is a common type of, uh, construction service. This individual has construction expertise, um, as well as, um, bidding and solicitation and engineering. And so they are really, um, the nexus that draws all the pieces together, um, and gets projects, um, done and out the door. It's similar to, uh, Randy and our Public Works Department, um, or also, um, community, uh, development, uh, partners building Mariposa Village. They also have, uh, contracted owner's representative, um, uh, managing that, managing Walsh in that project. Um, so it's a very, uh, common and needed, um, position, uh, to pull all the pieces together. Um, so we are, uh, working towards getting the Heights, uh, uh, Heights plant implemented as quickly as we could. Um, we are in the middle of thirty percent designs for, um, Taylor Avenue and for enhanced crosswalks, um, with MIG. Um, but that was done through our qual, direct award through our qualified pool list. And, um, and that was limited to a hundred thousand dollar contract. And so a simultaneous effort has been to, um, solicit for an owner's representative to really take the baton and, uh, move that project forward to full construction documents and bidding, as well as integrating the undergrounding of overhead utilities, uh, the underground, um, portions of connecting, uh, to our CIP projects. Um, and really just, um, putting it all together into an overall strategy, and that's, uh, what this owner's representative is gonna do. Um, so we, um, issued for, um, an owner's representative, uh, back in the summer, had, um, several firms uh, expressed interest and attend a pre-proposal, um, bidding meeting. Uh, ultimately, only two firms, uh, proposed. Part of that is, uh, any firm that acts as our owner's representative cannot also bid on projects. So this owner's representative has a fiduciary responsibility to be essentially, um, an extension, uh, of our staff and to, um, operate, uh, solely in our best interest. So they can't have any conflict of interest, and so, um, uh, only two proper, uh, project management firms responded. Um, both were, uh, highly qualified and had excellent proposals. I reviewed with our city engineer, uh, interviewed them, and I'd say, uh, both would have been very good options. Where SOJ, the, who we're recommending approval to, I think really, um, crossed the finish line was just the exceptional references that we received from their prior, um, clients. So, um, the owner's representative from SOJ who's gonna be assigned to us, Dan Naughton, worked for TriMet uh, and also for Prosper Portland, which is the city of Portland's, uh, ur, uh, urban renewal agency. So did a, um, revitalization of a parking garage and retail space for Prosper Portland, and then also did an extension of the, uh, red line, uh, I believe, believe out to Hillsborough, as well as an additional line on the west side of the line. Um, and so that was, um, I believe over a two-hundred-million-dollar project, required um, co, uh, coordination with not only ODOT, but also Union, uh, Union Pacific. And you can imagine how complex of a project that was. And, um, the references from both, uh, TriMet and Hall, and Prosper Portland were, um, really shining, uh, shining references. So we're excited to bring, um, them on and recommend, uh, Dan Naughton and SOJ as an owner's representative for the Heights. Um, supported, I'll note also by Alice Cannon, um, who has, uh, experienced, uh, supporting the city in consulting roles, but also as, uh, as community and community development um, for the DOWs and several, um, cities in the, um, Portland area. She's on there, um, uh, for as-needed support for, uh, grant writing, uh, strategic communications, um, and just as-needed services. And, um, I should note that, uh, this entire contract, uh, while it has a not-to-exceed of three hundred and fifty thousand, will be on a time and materials basis. Um, so we will only incur billings as projects are getting done, and we expect, um, a typical range for an owner's represent, owner's representative work is about one to three percent of a project budget for reference. Um, so with that, I'll answer any questions, and there's also a suggested motion in your packet.
Hey, Gladys.
Thank you, Will. Uh, I was gonna ask about the budget question, so you've already addressed that in page thirty-seven of our packet. There's the method of approach. I was curious to better understand, uh, how SOJ demonstrated the community voice perspective, or how they're going to be engaged. Um, that is number, or G in the score criteria, would also like to better understand some of the risk-managed practices and how they did this in other areas and how they, um, how they would handle that, those kinds of strategies, also the reporting cadence. Uh, should we all decide that this is the organization that we should continue specifically, the conversations around how are the metrics being decided and how they're gonna be tracked, and what does a reporting cadence look like? What does that dashboard look like? That I'm assuming you would help coordinate and give updates, uh, to this governing body.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Councilor Rivera. Um, so much of that is, uh, to be worked out, um, as we get going, uh, with them. You know, this is, this project's gonna be, uh, very much start and stop based on funding, um, availability. So we have, um, about six-point-five million dollars left in urban renewal funding, and that's gonna get us through the, uh, Taylor Avenue, um, the enhanced crosswalks, potentially some improvements along Thirteenth. Um, but then we really just come up to the roundabout, and we need to find a way, uh, to, um, get fifteen million dollars, um, basically to continue on with the Heights Streetscape implementation. So, um, all that's to say that, uh, this isn't a, uh, it's a traditional project where you are just from start to finish, from, uh, you know, ward to close out and you're done. Um, this will be a very dynamic, um, kind of living, breathing, um, process where we're gonna be in partnership with, with Dan, supporting me, uh, and working with city staff too, to kind of, uh, design, design the plane as we're flying it, in order to, um, get the funding we need and, um, find those, those points for public outreach and participation. Um, so I, I'm sorry, I don't have a fully fleshed-out answer, um, because it is just so in the air how we're gonna get, um, through the Heights Streetscape Plan.
Thank you. I can understand how, you know, the performance metrics and the reporting are, are stuff that we, that you all figure out as you go. What I'm curious to know is, um, you're making a recommendation for us to go with SOJ, and I'm trying to understand how have they demonstrated the capability in delivering equity-centered benchmarks? How have they been approaching community engagement that you all felt that they would do a great job, you know, given our goals and everything that we've done with the Heights Street uh, skate plan in the, in the, in the past?
Yeah, and, um, to be candid, I, I think staff is going to, like, um, uh, take on, me and Jackie are gonna continue to carry the lion's share of the public engagement and, um, uh, kind of public-facing and, um, public communication aspects of this. Um, we, oh, really where SOJ, uh, we're gonna lean on is that construction expertise, um, public contracting, uh, managing, uh, engineers, uh, bringing in those really technical aspects of how do you get, um, you know, Pacific Power to, um, underground their utilities at the time that we need it, so that it corresponds with when we're doing our sidewalk work. That really fine-grained stuff, that's, uh, truly where SOJ is going to, um, bring the most value. And I expect that the, um, public engagement communication, um, uh, activities will remain mostly with me and Jackie.
Thank you for clarifying. Uh, I wholeheartedly trust that you all understand some of the expectations that we've set and that you will continue to work with them. Um, as you all think about engaging our community members. Thank you.
Any other questions for Will? Okay, with that, we do have a suggested motion in the packet.
I'll make that motion. It's, uh, I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board authorize the agency administrator to sign a contract not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Heights Streetscape Owner's Representative Services with Shields, Obits, and Johnson.
Motion by Cavalieri?
Second.
Second by Rivera. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes aye, uh, and contract award passes. Thank you, Will. Anything further, as far as administrator updates from you today?
No administrator update. I know you have a, a lot else on your agenda tonight.
Appreciate that. Uh, also, any items from agency members regarding urban renewal? They're usually or not. Okay. Okay, with that, I will adjourn the Urban Renewal Advisory, uh, or Agency Board meeting and pass the gavel back to Mayor Blackburn for City Council.
Thank you, Councilor. We take, it's, that takes us to a public hearing for ordinance twenty-ninety-four. I have a script. This is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Hood River Municipal Code Title Twelve, Public Utilities, Chapter Seven, System Development Charges, Section twelve dot oh seven dot oh nine oh, to clarify that affordable housing projects with state or private funding are eligible for system development charge exemptions. We will now take public testimony. Jen, has anyone registered to speak or provided written testimony? Hearing none, I will skip to the public hearing for ordinance twenty-ninety-four, system development charge exemptions is now closed. Abigail.
Great. I was, you need a staff report? I think you all discussed this two weeks ago, so I hope that what you have seen in, uh, the draft ordinance that was posted, um, that it reflects the direction that you gave city staff last week, or two weeks ago at your last meeting, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Abigail. Questions for our staff? I would entertain a motion.
I motion to adopt ordinance twenty-ninety-four, amending the Hood River Municipal Code, Section twelve dot oh seven dot zero nine zero, and to have its first reading by title on, only under city recorder.
Moved by Rivera. Second by Mitchell. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
And there's just one correction, Mr. Mayor. I think it says October at the top, but it should say November. Right, Ben?
Didn't notice that one.
Thank, thank you, Anna, for that, uh,
Wrong. Yeah, that's right.
Pointing that out. Good. Uh, with that correction, uh, would entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve the corrected minutes.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Gaki. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. The November minutes passed. Uh, discussion items, GO bond planning polling, Will.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I'm back. Um, Mayor Blackburn, members of the, um, council, we have the next step in our GO bond planning process. So the council's heard, uh, a primer on GO bonds generally. We had, um, a discussion about prior engagement that, um, informed our current capital plans that could be, um, create project bond for. We did, um, a work session, um, on, uh, prioritizing potential projects, and then our last touch point was then, um, taking those highly-ranked projects and putting it together into, um, project packages or combinations of projects, um, that we could, um, put forward to voters, uh, with the different price points uh, and, and tax rates. So the next step is to get some initial polling to inform, uh, as we continue to refine and focus, uh, what our, uh, potential ask is for, uh, on a potential November twenty-twenty-six ballot. Um, so staff, um, reached out to, uh, multiple, um, public, um, uh, public information, public, uh, um, polling firms. Uh, two responded and, uh, met with me to better understand our needs and what we'd be looking for. And then, uh, those two responded with full proposals. Um, both were suggesting, uh, four-hundred-person, uh, response, um, uh, responses in order to get statistically valid, um, uh, um, conclusions, and, um, uh, so that was reviewed with, uh, their proposals were reviewed by, uh, Jackie, uh, and, uh, with city manager, um, Abigail. And we, um, are recommending, uh, Praxis, uh, to do some of that preliminary initial polling. The, uh, three, I think, large objectives with the polling is one, uh, get feedback on those projects and project combinations that we discussed with council, um, previously, to see which one of those gets traction and, uh, resonates with, with the voting public. Also, get the public's general, um, appetite, or what they think is at least feasible or manageable from, uh, um, far as the size of the ask of a tax rate or the size of a bond, uh, to get the bounds of what may be reasonable. And, uh, and particularly in the context of asks, what may be asks from the Parks District and the School District that we expect, um, coming either in May or in the November ballots. So that will be part of the process as well. And then third, get also a sense of what the voters' expectations are as far as, um, due diligence as we uh, continue to, uh, flesh out these options. You know, we, the, uh, police station numbers are really backed by, uh, you know, professional architects who have spent a lot of time, but a lot of the other ones are very much more, um, in a preliminary stage, and, um, uh, I think better understanding what voters expect as far as development will help us as well. Um, that was one place where the Parks Department felt like they got tripped up, um, last go-around with their, with their bond. Um, but also, we don't wanna spend, um, a ton of, um, money uh, on design, engineering for projects that may not go anywhere. Um, so it's a real balance, and this, uh, polling will help, uh, inform that decision as well. Um, so we have a, uh, suggested motion in your packet, uh, to, um, choose, uh, Praxis, and then also for a ten percent, uh, on top of the contract price, uh, for the Urban Renewal Agency, um, to administer this contract. So essentially, me administer this contract on behalf of the city. And so with that, I'll, um, answer any questions.
Thank you, Will. Go ahead, Ben, and then Gladys. I'm sorry, Anna, it was hidden behind Ben. Were you, okay. Ben, Gladys, Anna. Yep.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, I mentioned, uh, in the packet here that there's, uh, um, that Praxis had worked in, uh, uh, with a couple other, uh, local districts, coming from Community College, everybody, Parks and Recreation District, North Wausau County Parks and Recreation District, uh, and I was curious, um, you know, for those surveys that they conducted, um, did they feel, or were the survey results generally reflective of the election outcomes? I'm trying to gather how, how good, um, I don't know if this was something that was covered, uh, in your research, but, you know, how good was the data that came out of those, uh, surveys, uh, compared to how the elections actually turned out?
Yeah, thanks. No, I didn't do that. I didn't ask that specific question. Uh, I do know that, you know, that's where they come up with the four-hundred-person, um, response rate, is to get a statistically valid response. Um, and I do know that they have, um, techniques that have been developed in recent years to get around the fact that most people don't have landlines anymore, so they're gonna do cell phones. that most people don't have landlines anymore. So they're going to do cell phones, postcards, also advice for the ways that we can help assist them to, you know, if we get the word out that someone's going to be, you know, someone may be contacting you and letting them know it's legitimate, that helps as well. So there's going to be a bit of a partnership there. But all those things help support accuracy. I'll say, you know, not the one that's recommended today, but another firm that Parks and Rec used in their last bond and GO or, and operating levy. They, the executive director noted to me that he felt like the, that process and this amount of responses did provide a very accurate look in that after they had done that polling, then the Parks District decided to increase what they're asking for. So they ended up changing, their ask was not what, what they polled. So he wanted to make sure that, that wasn't sort of cast, they're not passing a bond last time, doesn't, shouldn't cast dispersions upon the validity of polling generally.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is around public engagement of those 400 individuals. Just making sure that we do have materials that are available in English and in Spanish and recognizing that we are in a time where many of us have received those, you know, spam text messages. How are we ensuring that we're letting our community members know that you are receiving a legitimate link? And this information is something that is, you know, being shared back to council for these bonds? And then lastly, my third question is around timeline. How soon do we expect this to happen? For example, if, if we as councillors need to make an update, whomever's doing the next update, that they can include this in that so that that can be a shared, shared with appropriate channels? To be able to understand, like, what are some of the questions that folks have? Given that at some point we will have to have some education, both in English and in Spanish, about the bond. So that helps us understand the overall timeline, timeline.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you so much for that. And yeah, I think there will be touch points where if the city gets involved or if councillors get involved, that will help response rates, help us get the best answers and, and improve the whole process. So, yeah, after I meet with Praxis and we get started, I'll have better direction to give as far as how we can link in and, and support their efforts. I will say that this is meant to be very preliminary. We may even do additional bonding after we refine our final ask or, or we feel like we're getting close to what is our final ask. There may be another round of this. This is going to be just super preliminary. You know, right now, we have what was presented to council, I think, was as low as a 50 cent per thousand ask all the way up to, I think, a dollar fifty per, per thousand ask. And we had dollar ranges, I think, from eight million up to like 40 million. Don't quote me on that. I'd have to look back again. But all to say is a wide range of dollar amounts and wide range of topics. And so we, this isn't meant to basically be end-all, be-all of polling. This is helping the council get to just where they feel comfortable taking that next step and refining. And there will be, once the campaign gets started, there will be, I'd say, 5X, 10X more types of engagement and ways of engagement and just volume of engagement in public communication.
Thank you. I hear that. And I still just want to stress the importance of plain language information so that folks understand what we're asking and that we do have property owners that are Spanish-speaking where this information would be really valuable to them. So just continue to keep that in mind. Thanks.
Anna.
So I think Councilwoman Rivera and I have the similar thoughts about things because I was also curious about timing. And as I was reading this, I was also really curious about the 400 number. So our city population is about 8,500. There's, I looked today because I was curious about this. In our entire county, we have 16,677 registered voters as of January of this year, according to Oregon Secretary of State's Elections Division. Why 400? And then the second question is, this is based on Praxis's proposal for an 18-minute survey. What can we learn in 18 minutes that we can't learn in 12 minutes? And 18 minutes to me is a third of a billable hour. I, I don't have time to talk to somebody on the phone about this for 18 minutes. So I would think that, back to the plain language, like, I would think, you know, why, why? I'm just curious. Why are we leaning that way?
Yeah, thanks. So as far as 400, that's what both firms proposed. And I believe that's because that's the amount necessary to get a statistically valid sample. And this is reaching back to, to my college stats, but it, it doesn't matter if we're polling in Chicago or in Hood River, as long as it's a random sample, 400 is, I think, basically what you need in order to get a good poll, a high confidence interval in the results.
Well, that, that doesn't mean that we only poll 400 people, right? It means that you're, you're getting 400
Responses.
Responses, okay. Oh, and I wanted to correct my math. It's not a third of a billable hour. It's three tenths of a billable hour. Just in case people are curious about how I do my billing.
Yep, yep. Correct. And that's where the expertise of a firm that specializes in polling will help us get, make sure it's random and get, make it be as high quality as possible to support a good confidence interval in the responses. And as far as the length, you know, we do have the quotes for shorter if we want to go that way as we work this out with the, with the team. I think 18 minutes was about where the Parks and Rec survey was at. And it really gets into survey construction where they try to, I believe, ask questions, basically ask the question, same question multiple different ways and to ensure that people are giving a consistent answer. And that gets to kind of, you know, how strongly held or maybe how durable their opinion is.
Doug and then Gladys.
Just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Will. Don't want to get too ahead of ourselves here, but just wondering in terms of designing the poll. You know, one thing that I like about, you know, it's, as it says here, distilling the four bond packages that we didn't go too narrow-focused to begin with and be able to whittle it down so on and so forth, right? But as you mentioned earlier in, in your report, you know, there's some really hard data behind, say, the police station, but you know, what might be done for affordable housing or, you know, you know, options for public works and whatnot. Will, we have an opportunity to see the materials so that we can understand what these questions are going to be? I mean, I'm sure staff will work towards getting that done. But, you know, do we get a chance to kind of weigh in on what this looks like before it goes out?
I will try to. I don't think there would be any harm in that. We are trying to hit the window. And then, I'm sorry, previous councillor asked about timing and I didn't answer that directly. We are trying to hit the window between Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. But even if there's not time for maybe another meeting about this, or I'll, I'll try to get the questions out to the council just as an FYI and then certainly get feedback back.
Yeah, and, and certainly don't want to architect it and, you know, we're not professionals in terms of how surveys go. But want to make sure that at least we can understand that there's nothing glaring or could, could leave a lot of room for interpretation being that, you know, some of the asks will be developed as we understand what, what the appetite is.
Yeah. Yeah. And to that point, that's, that's where really that number three objective comes into play. I think affordable housing is, is the prime example of, you know, we could due diligence this out to the point where it is another, you know, we have a purchase option agreement on a piece of property and, you know, developer on the line, you know? Or we could just say, and this is how Portland and Metro did it, is just we want to authorize money for affordable housing to be, to be determined. And that actually, that, that second route provides you, you know, the very most flexibility to act on opportunities to get good prices on land, to be, you know, responsive to, to, you know, as, you know, to not have to project out two years from now exactly what we want to build, but go through more public process in order to get more feedback and refine what we want to do rather than having to set it out. And then once it's in, you know, black and white and you've added that description to your ballot and that's what people voted on, you're really prescribed within those four walls and you're stuck there. So that's where we don't want to be, we, we need to gauge through this initial polling what the expectations are for how fleshed out this is going to be because it's, there's some real pros and cons to having to develop it too much ahead of the ballot.
Right. And, and I, and just to close this out, you know, and then I agree with you. I just get worried that, you know, with affordable housing, for example, it's, you know, catch all for affordable housing. If you ask 10 people on the street what they think affordable housing is, they might have 10 different answers, right? So I just want to make sure things are primed for, you know, maybe not what, this will be used for this development, but, you know, what affordable housing is, for example, or what some of these other things are. So that, that's the kind of stuff that I'd be looking for versus like, you know, reading, weighing in on every question.
Yeah, something, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Cavallieri's comment reminded me that I had another area or that I wanted to echo the highlight of concern around an 18-minute survey. I know that we don't have the funds to allocate for this time around, but incentivizing people for their time is really valuable. So if we can keep things plain language, short and sweet, that can reduce the amount of time that folks are spending on this survey. 18 minutes is a significant amount of time. And, and just something for us to think about in the future is how are we incentivizing our constituents? Should there be a time threshold that, that we know it may take for them to complete this and that we truly do value their time and their input? Thanks.
Amanda.
Yeah, I initially was just curious about the, how it ended up at the 18-minute thing too, especially if there's other options. Just want to mention that. And then is like, is the only way the polling is done over the phone and conversation with people? Or is there like an online poll or how? How is it done exactly?
Yeah, thank you. And there are options for shorter surveys, so it would be less money if we do shorter. So the, this is authorizing it not to exceed amount. And if the survey can be done with fewer questions, that's certainly the way we're going to do it. But to Councillor Stupina's, you know, question about, you know, fleshing out what people think affordable housing is. And, you know, we're looking at transportation projects and to police station, to public works, to safe routes, to school. There's, we're trying to get a lot of, out of this preliminary polling. And so that's where I do, we may need to lean more towards the longer survey because, yeah, we're trying to get a lot of mileage out of these responses. And we have a, a long ways to go. But as far as format, yes, it'll be multiple formats, I believe. Landlines are not, very few people have landlines. And so I believe there will also be, be through cell phones. And then they also have options if needed, doing postcard or online. They have multiple formats. And I, I'd have to leave it to the experts to know when and how to use those multiple methods and ensure that we're getting a representative sample and statistically valid responses.
Keep going, Amanda.
What does a postcard method look like? And, and is this something like, even if they, you know, have, or making the calls and doing these other things, like, can we just put up something that anybody can go to, to fill it out, like beyond the 400? Or is this just really specific to like the 400?
Yeah. My understanding is no, this cannot just be open. This really needs to be in invite. But I'm getting a little bit out of my depth there, and that's where we have to rely on these firms that, you know, have been doing this for decades. Is, we need to make sure it's a representative sample of who's going to show up. And if you have something that's just open invite, there's a large self-selection bias that can creep in and could lead us to erroneous conclusions.
Methodology, methodology question for you. In order to achieve a statistically significant sample, I understand why we have the number of 400 we made in order to make sure that statistical significant sample is relevant, why it's capped at 400 as well, correct?
Yeah, I think that's where we kind of hit a, a potential sweet spot as far as cost and, and product of the, of the work where we get a good confidence interval. We could always do more, but you get diminishing returns. And each, each, you know, the 401st respondent costs just as much as the first respondent.
Yeah, yeah. And statistically, once you start to get beyond a certain number of respondents, statistically, the, the stats don't matter statistically, not as individuals, but statistically, it's just a math thing. The question regarding the, the length of the survey in terms of time. Based on our questions that we asked you for answers to, which survey length would best answer the questions that we asked you to get answers to?
Yeah, I think we're like, like I was saying before, I think we're leaning the longer, but we haven't constructed it yet. We'll try to save money for sure. But like I said, we've, we've got a, a wide range of both in dollar amount and in potential types of projects. So I would suspect that we're going to be on the longer end rather than the shorter.
Got it. All right. Thanks.
Other questions for Will? Gladys?
It's not a question, more of like a comment. I understand that the threshold is up to 18 minutes. But if we really look in plain language, the questions, like, there's an opportunity where we can minimize the amount of time, which, you know, we want to keep their attention to finish the survey. And I think that's what I was trying to get at is, I know that we have up to $32,000 and that's fine. But if we can keep the questions short and sweet and understandable where folks can comprehend so that we don't have to keep them for 18 minutes in order to be able to address these questions.
Mayor, if I may add a comment, and I am definitely not a statistician nor a professional survey taker. But what I have seen in doing a little bit of this work as a librarian long ago would be that 18 would be the max amount of time somebody would be on. So there's a lot of if-then things, like if the person says yes, then we follow the script. If they say no, we follow a different script. And so depending on how people answer, it could be a five-minute conversation or it could be 18 minutes. So I want to be clear that I don't think the, every single person will be on the phone for exactly 18 minutes. I think the survey folks are trying to give us a range of like, this is what we anticipate depending on the depth. But it's a, it's a range, not a specific piece. And Will might be able to speak more to that. But just, there is a real science behind this. I want to remember that we're looking for, at this moment, this is not education or community-wide. This is about how do we, what's the temperature of our voting pool? So the folks that they would contact would be people who have voted in last certain number of elections, likely voters. So some of the concerns, I want to like differentiate the survey and the polling piece from a general education piece that will absolutely be need to, need to be done. But this is like kind of this moment in time. It's a really select small group of people for a reason.
Thank you, Abigail.
Yeah, exactly right. Nothing died.
Doug? Can I make a motion? Please. I move to authorize an amount not to exceed $32,700 for bond polling services with Proxess and Patinkin Research Strategies and $3,270 for the Urban Renewal Agency to administer the contract.
Moved by Stupina.
Second.
Second by Paulson. Further discussion?
We talk about this for 18 minutes? No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thanks, Will. I'm so eager to see the results. We're going to do the development code update, but first we're going to take a five-minute break. Sorry, Kevin. Thank you.
All right, brings us to Dustin and Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Blackburn and counselors. For tonight's, for tonight's work session, we're joined by Matt Hasty and Carrie Brennicky of the consulting firm MIG, who've been leading the development code audit and update project. Last week, we distributed materials for what we're referring to as Module Four of the project. These are focusing, are code focusing on building and site design standards. This material is in tonight's packet labeled Meeting Packet Part Two, beginning with a memo dated November 25th that highlights 10 issues for discussion. Those 10 items are found on pages two through five of that memo. And you'll see some blue text, and that's actually, those are links to the associated code down deeper in the document. That memo also includes a summary of feedback from this planning commission from our work session a week ago, as well as a few comments we received from the audience that night. Matt and Carrie have a presentation for you tonight. They're going to run through, we'll go through those 10 questions. They're going to start with a quick recap on how we got to where we are right now. And unless there are any questions, I'm going to just turn it right over to Matt and Carrie.
Looks good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me here. Good to be here in the, in the three D.
He was going to say the third dimension of this guy.
Weird, right? So I'm going to pull up a presentation and I don't, I usually have like another, you know, something else, another screen to share. So I
Low tech out here in the booth, man.
Right, we'll see. Give it a try. Perfect. There we go. Excellent. Okay, so as Kevin said, quick status report. A little bit of a recap on kind of what we talked about last time when Carrie did most of the talking or almost all the talking for the two of us. And then you get to hear me do the talking tonight. And then we'll walk through the, that list of 10 items that Kevin mentioned. We'll do, I'll do kind of a quick paraphrase of the, sort of the background, let you know what we heard from the planning commission, and then we have questions for you. In many cases, the question is, what do you think? Do you support this approach we're recommending? In the other cases, we've got other questions, but we'll kind of walk through those. So I have some notes, so I'll try to manage my notes in my presentation. All right. So just in terms of kind of a recap of kind of where we are, I won't, you've seen this slide that's about to come up before. I won't spend a lot of time on this. Just note that we have been walking through and reviewing each of these sort of buckets or modules of code amendments. So we're on number four out of four. And we've been talking to the planning commission as well. We have a couple of next steps. One, a couple of them are community engagement steps. So one, we've got the first of several kind of mini questionnaires up on your website. And your staff's been working to spread the word about that and get people to weigh in on that. There will be four of those approximately, and each one is meant to be pretty short. You know, just two or three questions at the most, try to get some quick feedback from folks. We'll have all four sort of available for the whole time that we're running those. But every couple of weeks, we'll put a new one up. So that set of mini surveys will run through till about mid, well, the end of January. And then that'll give us then time along the way and at the end to summarize what we've heard. And we will then use that information as we work on sort of the next piece, which is the consolidated set of draft code amendments. So we'll be using what we hear from that set of questionnaires, what we've heard from you all, from the planning commission, from staff. And then we're also getting ready to conduct a series of small group meetings with interested parties. I think you've all had a chance to see the list of folks we're going to try to talk to. So the first set of those meetings will be happening in the next several weeks. Kind of the first half of December. We're also working with the Nextdoor Inc. to put together and facilitate a meeting with Spanish-speaking residents. That will happen in January because we just need more time to kind of organize until that meeting together. So we're working with them right now to get that meeting together. So those, what we hear from those meetings will also feed into what we're doing in terms of that next step of consolidating, combining, consolidating, and further updating the four sets of code amendments. So that's kind of what's coming up next. There will then be further refinement of those before we go into an adoption process. So after we've kind of got those consolidated amendments, we'll talk to the planning commission about them, talk to you about them. There may be some specific things we check in with you on again, but hopefully not the volume of things we've asked you about up to this point. But there might be a few things to ask you about specifically. And then from there, we head into the adoption process. So that's what's remaining in the project. So we've done a lot of work, but we've still got some work to do. So very quick reminder of sort of what these four modules have been. The first one was general provisions and introduction to the code. Second had to do with procedures, application procedures, review procedures, land division procedures. We've consolidated the two main titles of your code into, or are consolidating them into one section. So we had to pull in all the land division and subdivision procedures. The last one we talked to you all about was the regulations that apply to specific zones, both base zones as well as overlay zones and special use standards. And those were oriented mostly towards sort of site development standards. So things like lot size and building coverage and things of that nature. And then tonight, we're talking about community design and land division standards. So that's what those 10 items are going to sort of focus in on. And this was, as you probably saw, like the longest yet of the really long documents we've been sending you. So apologies, but it's a lot of stuff and hopefully you were able to give it a, give it a skim. So again, just kind of a, oops. There we go. Reminder of what some of the specific sections are that we're talking about tonight. So administration of design standards, orientation and design of individual buildings and sites to some degree, standards related to transportation, access and circulation, as well as landscaping, street trees, fences and walls, outdoor lighting. We'll talk about all those things in a little more detail. Vehicle and bicycle parking for different types of uses as well as public facilities. So that's kind of the breadth of stuff that's in this fourth code module that we're talking about tonight. I have a little animation here. So as you saw in what we sent you, you saw in some cases, sources, example standards from different sources. And these are kind of all the sources we use. So the state has prepared a model code for small cities. That's actually in the process of being updated right now. Our firm is updating that, so that's nice. It's not all the way updated. That's not as nice. But at least we have the people working on it close by and we can ask them questions and review the stuff that they've reviewed already or prepared. The other piece is the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Model Code. That's some fairly specific standards that are coming out of that larger state rulemaking process. Our firm is also working on that. That is done. So we have been able to sort of borrow some standards from that document as well. So that's been really nice. Of course, your existing code, there's a lot of provisions that will likely be pulled from and used, you know, from your existing code with some modifications by us. And then there are some other code updates or recently updated codes or just kind of best practice codes from around the state that we're looking at. So you'll see some provisions from some of those communities' codes in here as well. Ben, Sandy, Sisters, Sandy in particular was done to address the requirement for clear and objective standards. So that one's been vetted as, you know, meeting that requirement. So that's why in part we have used that one. And then of course, we're doing our, we're addressing state legislative requirements. That's the sort of a, a pretty important goal for the state for this project. And they're funding part of this project. So we're making sure that we're reviewing those requirements. And for the ones that apply to Head River, pulling them into your code as well. And then of course, lots of discussion by the project team. So we met actually this afternoon for several hours with Dustin and Kevin and talked through Module Three. So that was great. So with that, maybe I'll take a quick pause and then I'll jump into the, the individual 10 questions. But just see if you have any questions about process up to this point.
Nope.
Okay, excellent. So we'll take these kind of one at a time. Again, I'll do a quick intro and then see what you think. So this first one, residential design standards. Your code has kind of a limited number of design standards for residential uses. In a number of cases, they're, they don't meet that clear and objective requirement. And so our recommendation is that you replace and supplement those standards with additional standards, either from the model code for small cities or that ONA, Oregon Housing Needs Assessment Model Code. Those have been developed to be clear and objective and to be just kind of a starting point for cities around the state to incorporate those types of standards. So that's kind of the general recommendation from the team and from staff on that one. Planning Commission, I think a majority of folks on the planning commission said, yes, that makes sense. We do want to make sure there's some flexibility built in where we can provide that and where that's consistent with state standards. We had one member of the planning commission who kind of questioned the need for some of these standards. Do we really need to require buildings be designed in this way or to this level? I think a majority of folks said, yes, it's important to maintain a certain aesthetic or visual quality of new, new buildings and new development and recognize that there is some trade-off between that and what it costs to build a building. And we need to kind of seek that balance. But I think majority of people said the balance is important. So that's, and so I think the question for you is, do you support our recommendation around this one? And I guess, should I just check with you if you have anything to add on any of these or do you want me to just chime in?
I'll chime in as you need me. Any, any comments on this number one item? Y'all? Got it?
Thank you. I think I would, I appreciate the planning commission direction on here. I just want to highlight the importance of free application meetings where the city is meeting with those developers and any other folks like FIRE, for example, that need to be there, that we want to have some standards or restrictions, but that we don't want to create any unnecessary barriers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what, what Counselor Rivera just said. And it kind of speaks to all of these. When we are speaking about middle housing, any, any types of housing that is, that would be desirable, you know, given the, the low amount that we've had in the last 25 years being constructed. I just wouldn't, would hope that everyone's looking at removing any impediments to housing code that would be affecting cottage clusters or middle housing or apartment buildings and weigh that against the standards of, of, you know, the housing types that we have quite a few of, you know, of single-family homes and whatnot. So that's, it's a general comment, but would be looking for that.
Just clarification from the planning commission. These, they, they were balancing what is required for health and safety and aesthetics, subjective aesthetics with not having necessarily those standards as well, correct? So those, those two types of standards? Or are they just talking about health and safety requirements, which everybody should meet? And separating aesthetics out?
So I mean, I'll take a shot at that and see if you want me to take a shot. Yeah, this is not, these standards, residential design standards in this project have no way, shape or form are eliminating the building code or the technical aspects of the FIRE code. There is no, there's no compromise there. So these aesthetics were more related to the zoning code. So whether, they're, they are not the life safety standards, if you will.
And I think I, I did sort of simplify it a little bit by focusing on aesthetics or kind of visual or material quality. But there's other standards that relate to just giving people fairly easy pedestrian access into their homes, you know? So making sure that you can get in to your front door and then you can actually maybe see people who are out in front of your house, you know, from your front door, from the front of your house. So there are some standards around that, around just how you orient entryways into buildings. And there are some standards around in other parts of the code, of course, landscaping and things of that nature. So it's kind of does go a little beyond aesthetics to just, I'll call them kind of best practices for urban design. But not like, if we were to take all the things in the model code for small cities, there would be a lot more standards in there. So we're, we are trying to kind of balance things in that way. Thanks.
Thanks for clarifying.
Was that?
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We don't want to be too rigid. But in all of this work, I think something I'm really looking for is that where can we reduce those hard costs? And even with the design, we know that landscaping could be a hard cost, right? We know that parking could be a hard cost. So in all of this work, that's something to just keep in mind is where is there flexibility for us to reduce that? So that that helps incentivize folks to want to build the type of housing that we need.
Yes. Some of those I'll talk about as we go forward.
I, I listened into the Planning Commission meeting and I kind of remember this portion of their discussion where they were talking about like orientation of the front door, orientation of the garage doors and those kinds of things. And one council member was saying, you know, if we regulate this too much, it does impact, you know, developers' ability or builders' ability to design their homes. And then I thought it was really interesting that one of the commissioners that has a lot of experience in building said it was actually, it would be helpful to have some of this, like, you know, guide, guidance. I was surprised and impressed to hear that and I thought that was valuable input. But I think that that's, I, I think, I wanted to watch the Planning Commission because I wanted to see what kind of, what kind of direction you were going to get, what we would be, what we would be hearing from them. And I think that this is reflection of what they, exactly what they said. I think it's generally, they did support having some kind of guidelines. What I wasn't sure about and what I didn't hear in the discussion was whether or not there would be an opportunity. The point of this, and it kind of bugs me that it says we're not addressing policy issues, like that's our job, we do policy. So the fact that it says right in the beginning of this, like, we're not here to discuss policy, then I'm like, why are we here? But the, the purpose of this whole exercise is to create clear and objective standards. And I think that, that this helps with that, without being, like, it's going to be an interesting balance of without being overbearing in, in what the requirements are.
Yeah, I put my fellow counselors in terms of talking about making sure we're not doing things that are gonna really unnecessarily burden the creation of housing, particularly more dense housing. I appreciate your phrasing of it as best practices. That's something I kind of struggled with this part because I kind of, you know, didn't felt like, you know, sometimes we get into a conversation about aesthetics and just like, well, I don't really, you know, that's not like crazy important to me in terms of depending on what we're talking about, like house color. Like I'm a little bit of the mindset that to some degree, people should, you know, kind of be able to do what they want to some level with their houses. And I don't want to be in a position where we feel like we've got turned Hood River into like a, you know, an HOA kind of situation. But having it framed as best practices, I, I like that in terms of like orientation of driveways and, and stuff. That's, that's helpful for framing this, I think, pardon the pun.
Anything else on number one, Yul? Carry on.
Awesome, thank you. So number two is sort of a little bit the flip side. So it's looking at non-residential building design standards. So standards for primarily commercial development and to some degree, you know, let industrial institutional, those kind of other forms of development. So somewhat similar to residential design standards. Well, I'll actually start out saying you have a couple of areas of the city where you actually do have, you know, some pretty solid and fairly detailed design standards. So in the downtown area and in the waterfront overlay district, you have adopted, you know, a fairly robust set of design standards, but not so much in other zones within the city. And so we, staff is recommending that you do update the design standard for those types of buildings as well or those types of uses as well. Again, not to go too crazy, but to incorporate some fairly basic design standards to maintain, again, kind of the quality of construction and access and things of that nature for those forms of development as well. So kind of the same general approach. And so what we heard from the Planning Commission, yes, they were generally supportive of adopting design standards and looking at best industry practices in this case. I will say again that that model code for small cities has a really extensive set of standards. It felt like kind of too much in this case. We looked at a couple of other communities, including Ben. Ben has a sort of a more, I'll call it condensed set of standards. But still, if you've been to Ben recently, I feel like, you know, they're really getting some quality commercial development over there. So they seemed like a good sort of peer community for y'all, larger, but, you know, in other ways, somewhat similar to Hood River. So we are recommending that and, and the Planning Commission was generally supportive of that. They again, want to make sure there's a certain amount of flexibility within those standards. And they, you know, noted the need to think, think, thought, be thoughtful about how we apply those types of standards to mixed use developments. So you need to apply clear and objective standards to residential development or housing. You have more flexibility in what you apply to non-residential. But if you've got a mix of development, you have to apply clear and objective standards to the, to the, to the project. So, so that's important for us to kind of work through in just a little more detail about how's it work when you've got a non-residential element within a mixed use development. So that's what we heard from those folks.
Yeah, the, the, the applied to mixed use development piques my interest as well because I think, you know, the state of Oregon regarding zoning and everything, if we work all the way down to R1, there are ways to increase density by state law in those areas. I, I would like to make sure that we're, you know, incentivizing, again, this sort of development that happens in the C2 zone where we're getting a lot of units for mixed use development. So I just would like it for, for, you know, for it to be thought of in, in its own category almost, you know what I'm saying? Because like that's, so yeah, you're pointing, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, so how does that happen? Because, yeah, I mean, anytime we've ever had at least interest in, you know, some sort of large amount of units, it's been in the C2 zone, right? So how do we, how do we not disincentivize that type of development for being too many standards for commercial?
Yeah, well, I think for one, if somebody comes in with a development in that zone and it's a mixed use development, then they will need to adhere to, again, some clear and objective standards that apply to residential development. And then for, let's say there's ground for a commercial or a commercial use that's sort of a standalone commercial use on part of the site. Those can be, particularly the standalone use can go through the commercial design standards for the building. So I, I think it's really about kind of how do we apply those standards to those two different types of uses within a single development? And again, sometimes they're going to be standalone, but sometimes there's going to be a mix of them above one as opposed to the next two. So I don't know if that's a really good answer.
Again, and in the previous module, when we all talked to you, there was some sentiment, not just about how these things looked, which is really more the focus here. It was the idea of incentivizing mixed use in areas that traditionally you hadn't seen them before, kind of in nodes for transportation corridors and other areas that they might be suited where that might not have been something that we contemplated before. And I brought up the, you know, the mixed use coffee shop, the corner store, that market. And so taking that away from you all, and so that's what I gathered from you. We will need to, in this part, craft something that, to some extent, rep, we're going to try to channel what you thought and what we thought of what that building design looks like. It's a, you know, the corner store, that small format market, that small, small format mixed use. Manage that with clear and objective standards that have to be applied to that in a site that will not have customized design review because it cannot have customized design review and, and really try to build something that, that we think's fitting to you all, the time, place and manner options and that location. As well as, I think we had the R3 sentiment there that everyone continues to shift to this commercial zone. They, they keep pushing that way away from this, the high density, your high density residential, why is that? So we are trying to also manage some of those design standards and some of those time, place and manner locations that you all had talked about before. And that are in module three that we talked about today. So we're working on those refinements of location. They need to be paired with refinements in design and layout.
So, yeah, so your, your, your lens for looking at module four is through what was decided in module three, so that's.
Right, that's time, place and manner. This is more the form, the form based aspect of it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I agree with everything that's been said. And I think that West Side could be a, a great baseline for what this looks like, given that, you know, it's a little bit of a blank canvas out there. And again, how do we balance some of these restrictions and, and costs? And that we continue to be flexible. I know that in our last meeting, we talked a lot about case by case scenarios. So something to continue to reiterate specifically here, understanding that there may be some projects might have more access to corporate funding than others. And so being aware of that, and again, how do we reduce those hard costs for folks when, when possible?
I was just curious if you could explain more about like the flexibility being built in or allowing flexibility? Like what does that mean exactly? Is it on a case by case, like you have to plead your case to get the flexible decisions or?
So I think it could be built in in a couple of different ways. I'll, I'll try to answer and then I'll see if these folks have other things to add. So one, I think for residential standards, one way you can build that in is through providing some kind of menu based approach for certain design standards for certain types of development. So you need to do some of these things, but not all of these things. That's one way to build in flexibility. Two, you can give people the option to pursue an alternative, more discretionary path. If that's what they choose to do, there has to be this clear and objective pathway and set of standards for residential development. But you can provide an alternative discretionary path if somebody chooses to go down that road. So that's a second. And then for commercial design standards in particular or non-residential design standards, you just have more flexibility to give people choices or to apply standards that allow for a little more creativity, which also then requires a little more review on the city's part. But for those types of development, you've just got that ability kind of built into what the state allows you to do frankly, and what you choose to do in that regard. So anything else to do that?
Yeah, I think in the design flexibility, it's, it's not someone coming and pleading their case for design flexibility. I think there's a path, if you wanted to like have that, I think the, the standards themselves are supposed to move us towards a general outcome, not necessarily the one outcome. And so having some flexibility that, you know, this is not a, the only destination that to success is an Alpine ski resort motif. You know, we, we're, we are not looking to have this thing fit into one way. It's some generalized best practices when it comes to building layout. And however you choose to fit those into your design, I think that's the flexibility we're looking for. They're not, the standards would not be tailored so tight that they, that they don't provide some localized creativity for sites of, that are sloped, that are, it, it is Hood River, we are infilling, it is challenging. We, we understand we cannot tailor this thing so tight to not give people opportunities to express their creativity and build around difficult sites that are imperfect.
All right, okay. Next one is drive-throughs and drive-up uses. So these are kind of their own special animal to a way. Drive-up and drive-through uses, you know, they have potential impacts in terms of people driving more cars, sort of driving onto and through the site so they can impact pedestrian safety, things of that nature, traffic safety, lighting, et cetera. So they do tend to potentially have greater impacts on all those things than some other types of development. They tend to be located often in kind of higher profile areas or on higher profile busier streets. You don't have standards specific to these types of uses now in your code. So staff recommends that we incorporate standards and we again, use best practices from some other communities around the state. So we've been looking at some of those standards that are applied. I think Sandy is one of the ones we looked at and a couple of others to come up with at least sort of a baseline for Hood River. It can be tailored or tweaked, but that's our general recommendation. This one was a pretty quick, yes, we agree from Planning Commission. They didn't have a lot of other specific comments on this one. There was one specific comment where within the kind of model or template standards, we had, there was a, a threshold for slope of a queuing area within the drive-through or drive-up location of like 12%. And one of the planning commissioners says, wow, that seems really steep to me. Maybe you actually want that threshold to be a little lower. So that was, I think, kind of the only specific comment we had on those, other than yes, good approach. So just, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate this one. And, and the example that Abigail and I talked, that talked about is Dutch Brothers, for example. Like there's an area where there, there could have, we could have maybe been a little bit more strict, especially that the sidewalk, right? When folks are waiting in that long line, you have cars that are over the sidewalk and then kiddos can't utilize that to get to school, you know? And it causes some safety concerns. So yes, some level, level of standardization, but where should we be more restrictive? Given that we know it's high pedestrian or biking and how that may factor into the, the overall driveway.
I appreciate the example of, of Dutch Brothers because I, you make a good point about that congestion right there and the impact it has on pedestrians. But my question kind of was, like, how, how many, in, in the period that you've been here, Dustin? Like how, how many permits do we get and requests do we get for these kinds of businesses? And the reason why, I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't include it in a, a code update. It's better to be proactive and have it available, but how often does this come up?
I think for drive-throughs, there's one that has been threatened in the last year, which I think might have been a discovered drive-through that no one wanted to admit was a drive-through. There was another redevelopment, actually two, two that I can think of in the last permit cycle that we've had. I think gas stations is another one that I fit within this. And as Matt mentioned, these are uses that are high traffic, high profile in your community, have interesting relationships in terms of lighting, usually high light, often menu boards, which if you're next to a residential area, if you hear what the special does all through the night, people will, you know, there's some real impacts that are generated that are unique from these. But they actually appear more often than not. A gas station, we haven't had any, but the drive-through does make an appearance. And also I think if you're starting to look at investment in Cascade Avenue, a high traffic, the only east to west arterial corridor within your city and the investment within the heights, the only north to south arterial corridor in the city, you may see the catalyst for redevelopment of those uses.
And I can see it as West Side like that, blank canvas that we have is coming, that it'll be, it'll be nice to have these. But I just was thinking, like, part of the reason why we probably never really had it before was it probably doesn't come up that often. But if we had had it, then maybe Dutch Brothers wouldn't be as crazy. Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to add that that was the, the piece that I forgot to add and that Hats Fuel Station, I think, is another great example where we see long lines backing up and that that creates, again, a, a safety concern for folks. So thanks.
Yeah, and sort of making sure there's enough of that queuing space on site so that you don't have as much traffic backing up on the street. That's sort of one of the things to look at with these.
I guess in that, that area, like that, at certain times of the day in week, US Bank would be like queued up onto 12th, like a weird one, but a drive-through bank in that case was an impact, seems like. Grant?
Yeah, just for clarification purpose, this is not restricted just to drive-through food establishments, gas stations and banks necessarily. Could be potentially any commercial business that has high throughput, high demand, sort of short stays, where visitation vehicular focused sort of stuff, correct?
It is usually going to be an area where you are visiting the place and you're kind of staying in your car and you're using your car to acquire the service or the goods that you're getting from that place. So we kind of, that's why, that's why we refer to them as drive-through or drive-up. And gas stations is one where again, you know, you're, you're getting products for your car. So mostly it's focused on that. I'm gonna look over to Carrie and Kevin and just see if they have anything else to say.
Counselor, listen, I, I don't know, is there an example, is there an example of your thing?
That, that's one avatar, trying to think about, if we're going to do this thing, trying to think about future-proofing it, because I can imagine there will be other products, services or delivery models in the future that might um, use a similar sort of thing where people just cruise through with a vehicle, get what they need and head off. For example, uh, we now have car side delivery at grocery stores.
Right.
So we may in the future have a warehouse grocery store where people pull through a drive-through, for example. Um, say that they're there and somebody goes out with their stuff in a bag, lifts it up and they take off. Hypothetically, for example, those things may occur in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's a remote future, um, especially in the grocery world, um, but that's something that actually is presented a problem today uh with the grocery world of trying to fit a new queued up kind of transportation impact ad in a retrofit situation. Um, and we've had problems with fire department um, because they want to queue in the fire lane. I mean, th- this is a, this is a real-time response to these issues as well.
So.
That would be a drive, that would be a drive-through use.
I think what you described, yeah, would qualify. And I think it's, that's just a good question in terms of thinking closely about how we define these uses and are thinking ahead to stuff like that. And maybe again, as Dustin said, not too far ahead. I mean, I, I will say that um, currently the provisions we've identified, if, if you drive into a grocery store parking lot and they have three or four spaces where you pull in, you park in that space, somebody comes out and brings you your groceries, you're not really queuing. You're not really driving the whole time. Those wouldn't necessarily be subject to these requirements, but.
But ima- imagine if they don't necessarily devote as much parking just to parking spaces and just have a drive-through.
Yes, then I think they would.
And the entirety of, for example, Safeway um is just a drive-through in the future.
Yeah.
Um, and so all of the people that go to Safeway, for example, not Safeway, but for example, uh, Safeway, now everybody that goes there instead just creates a queue.
Yeah.
What would the impact be on the local roads, should that happen in the future?
Yeah, I totally.
That, that's, I believe should be a consideration if we're going to go down this road. Pun not intended.
Good.
Anything else on this? Thank you.
All right. Go to the next one. Um, so somewhat similar lines, um, we've got um a, a item related to more generally transportation access and circulation standards. So this has to do with access spacing and location standards for, you know, getting in, onto a site with your car, similar to some degree to um drive-through uses, you know, this the number of access points, the spacing of those access points also has potential impacts on pedestrian and bicycle safety, vehicle safety too, for that matter, um, as well as impacts on on-street, the supply of on-street parking, the amount of land that's devoted to your landscaping tri- strip, and therefore the amount of land devoted to street trees or landscaping. So, um, so this has impacts um on these things as well. Um, you have um uh, I will say fairly, you know, a robust set of standards related to this. We do recommend um, some updates to those standards to pull in some of the standards, for instance, from that model code for small cities, just to kind of beef up your standards a little bit and address those types of impacts. So I think this is one where we're, we're proposing using really a lot of what you have, but supplementing in them with some other standards. So that's the, the goal here, and um I think um planning commission generally said, yes, that makes sense. They, they did say, hey, let's make sure that as we're doing this, we're consistent with engineering standards and other municipal code standards. So we don't create any inconsistencies between what's in the development code and what your public works or city engineers requiring around these issues as well.
Anybody? Hello, this.
Uh, thank you, uh, yes to all of that and that we want to pay special attention to where we know that there will be high pedestrian use, so having standards, but where can we potentially have some flexibility as well?
A lot of these is complicated to look at for me in isolation, because there are a number of standards that we have for in a number of different places that affect this directly. For example, that everybody would be talking about parking standards in units, um, that would impact this directly, for example. Uh, and so we would, uh, talking about this as one bullet on its own without talking about the other is difficult from my perspective. So with, without having input about the other one, it's difficult to give you a recommendation on this one.
Yeah, yeah, understood. That's a challenge. And I, I will refer to some of those things in remaining kind of bullets for points. Right, yeah.
Five.
All right, number five. Um, so this is landscaping standards. Um, I will note that the existing landscape standards, this was something we flagged in particular in the code audit and have been flagged in some previous reviews of your code. Um, there are a number of those landscaping standards that really are not clear and objective. Um, they're quite discretionary or somewhat vague, and so they really do need to be updated. And right now, um, let's see, yeah, they, they just need to be updated to, to move into that realm. And also, you know, there's a general goal to make sure that your landscaping standards are supporting finite resilience um, and um sustainable development practices. So in this case, we're recommending um incorporating some additional standards. I mean, they're gonna to some degree regulate the same types of things your code does now, just in frankly, a more clear and objective manner and something that's more implementable both for developers, but also for your staff to review and determine that, yes, these are consistent with the standard. Um, so that's sort of the general recommendation here. Um, and we're looking at some of those model code standards as well as some standards from other communities, again, making sure that they're they're clear and objective. Um, and so what we heard from the planning commission was yes, they generally agree with this approach. They did say, hey, let's make sure that again, we're being consistent in terms of these general landscaping standards and any specific landscaping standards we might apply in particular zones or to particular types of development. So the extent we have kind of any additional standards um, uh, beyond these general standards, just let's not create any conflicts there. So that was the general feedback from them.
This is an area where we can reduce hard costs and, you know, I want to also bring in a comment that I completely align with, that we heard from public testimony, that we want to make sure that we are reducing some of the requirements for middle, maybe even low-income housing and that um, with understanding that non-commercial folks who again have more funding or more corporate funding, that it is pretty strict of what the landscaping standards are there, but more flexibility for some of the other projects that we know and need i- in, within the city.
I, I had the same point, but just to build upon that, um, I know that landscaping, you know, uh, standards, maybe what we're proposing isn't a ton of money, um, by doing something that's, you know, model code and whatnot, but like every dollar matters when we're trying to incentivize somebody to build something that's higher density, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, um, you know, uh, bleeding out by a thousand cuts sort of thing, right? Um, it's really attractive to build a single-family home. It's not attractive to build other things. We're addressing that in other ways, but just to Councila Rivera's point, want to make sure that we're not saying that um middle housing or some of those other areas that we, we want to have more development within, um, are getting, are getting kind of just you know, check, checkbox by checkbox, a little, little money here, a little money there. Just want to be careful with that kind of stuff with those types of developments.
I also wanted to add multifamily housing to that as well, too.
Yeah, and I think that was partly where the planning commission was coming from about just being consistent. Not that you have to apply the same standard to everything, but more if we are looking at ways to apply some, to differentially apply some of these standards to those types of housing, we just make sure it's real clear, like what applies where, so, yeah.
Dustin, did you want to add?
Yeah, um, in the balance of that, certainly your councils need to be sensitive to this issue, but this is you know, this is also not just a vanity project. This is also about amenities. Um, you know, when you have single dwellings, they often have a backyard, a set aside open space directed for those people. Some of these standards are also amenities for the people that live there. So thinking about the future of those people that live there, you know, for me, I'm not thinking about just the only people that have access to a shade under a tree are the people that live in a single-family dwelling, making sure that our developments also provide those open space amenities for the people that live there on their own behalf. So i- it's that striking that balance of like, just because you live in affordable housing doesn't mean you're entitled to landscaping. That is like I will hard stop that until you tell me to not to, and I don't, I think you want to be sensitive to this burden, but also making sure we're not shorting people of lesser needs.
One of the frustrations I've had over the time watching developments is you check the box because you have to put in the tree, because we say you have to put in the tree and it needs to be whatever, two and a half, so it's one and three quarters, and then it gets bent over by the snowplow and they never irrigate it anyway, and so it dies. Like, I've seen that. That stinks. So I don't want to backtrack all the way to lose the meaningful incredible, you know, mature landscaping that eventually comes.
Yes, Dustin, I agree with what you said and same to you, Mayor. And we're going to get to this one and the next one, but trees was a specific example that how do we ensure that the area is livable, looks beautiful aesthetically, right? But that maybe instead of trees, like what is the alternative that could be used for some of these landscaping? Um, to again, reduce hard costs.
Yeah, and I think that was a great point, Dustin. Um, I, I, I just want to make sure again that it's not somehow more restrictive. Um, is the thing, you know, I think we heard in public testimony earlier, you know, it's, 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 it looks like that it could be possible for middle, middle housing to require more landscaping and that sort of thing. So it's just that kind of stuff that I, I would hope that we would look out for.
And, and certainly in terms of maintenance responsibility, ongoing commitments, that's as much of, that can be worked into the standards as well. So it's not just a plant and allow die, check the box. There is real regulatory law to require people to say, if you get a landscape plan approved, it is your obligation to commit and to make this thing live. That is well within the rights, and I think I hear a certain level of commitment to make sure that this isn't just checking the box and allowing the stuff to die. That's a wasted effort and waste of time and money.
Great.
I don't think you're going to find anybody here that hates trees. Um, the argument that we need to require um people to plant trees in their backyard, for example. Um, I, I don't know that people are going to necessarily not do that anyway, if they want a tree in their yard. Um, the, uh, what, what that does in effect uh, potentially is takes the choice out of the homeowner's hand to build an ADU or um something like that potentially, uh, if they are required to have that tree, maintain that tree, operate that tree uh indefinitely forever. Um, so I, I don't, i- if, if we are going to seriously commit to ongoing uh, tree infrastructure, uh, I would be more interested in committing to tree infrastructure in our public right-of-way. Uh, something that we as a city can actively invest in, maintain, uh, work on, um, ensure that there is a biodiversity of, of, of flora, make sure there's, it's not just a monoculture. Um, instead of hoping, uh, hoping and praying that somebody makes sure that that tree is alive in their backyard and robbing them of the opportunity to potentially provide, for example, an ADU in the future.
I agree with Grant.
All right, the next one is sort of, yeah, go to the next slide, sorry. Um, a little bit the flip side and, but also related to things I think you've been talking about. Um, so this is tree preservation um and planning standards. Um, so a couple of things, one, you do currently have provisions in your code related to this. They are um within or part of the land division process or subdivision requirements. So we do need to at a minimum update them so that they apply to residential development or other forms of development that are outside of the process of creating subdivisions. So one from just kind of covering development within the city, there's a need to update this part of your code. Um, and so we want to make sure also that they are, again, clear and objective. Um, so recommendation that we do update these standards, that the focus be um in large part on preserving significant trees. Um, you know, trees that are mature, have, um, are providing more sort of value in terms of shade and um, carbon sequestration and things like that, but that there also be some flexibility, just as I think you've been talking about, to mitigate. So you, it's not that you can't ever remove a tree if it really is not feasible, or you can't do that, you know, do the type of development you're allowed to do without removing it, that there be some provisions to mitigate the removal, so that there you, you focus on preserving significant trees, you provide some opportunity to mitigate impacts when there are going to be impacts. And so I think that'll help a little bit with at least some of the things that Grant talked about. So, all, uh, and then, you know, in terms of um the planning commission direct, um, direction, they said, yes, this makes sense to us. They also sort of pointed to examples where somebody prior to the development application and development process cuts down all their trees, and then they come in with the development application and, well, they've already cut down the trees, so there's no trees to preserve, so they don't have to. So trying to put some things into your code that prevent that from happening as well. Um, or sort of say, hey, if you just did this over a certain, you know, a certain number of months or years ago, you're gonna need to replant some trees or whatever it might be, so, um, did I get that right?
Um, I'd like to make sure too that there's some language within this section that um allows people to maintain and um the, the existing landscaping that they have, but like, or manage it. Um, we, we have a bunch of big old trees in our yard and some of them are diseased and need to come down before they fall onto our neighbors' homes. And I don't want people to feel like they're, you know, landowners to feel like they're, they're going to be um out of compliance with our code because they, they manage the things, or I mean, we also have to be concerned about fire stuff too, so um, I, I'm, I see that there's a balance of like, we don't want people clear cutting their um, their, their yards, but we don't, and we want people to have the flexibility to be able to build an ADU if they want to. But if they have mature trees on their property and those trees are you know, causing a, a, a risk of either damage or um fire, like people should be able to, be able to deal with that as they need to, right? Like that's not, this isn't, this is impact that at all?
I, I think, you know, most cities that have some kind of tree um preservation code allow for that kind of thing, you know, to take down a diseased tree or a hazard tree. Um, there may still be some requirements of replanning, but you wouldn't want to prevent somebody from taking down a tree that's, you know, risk, at risk of falling on the neighbor's house or whatever it might be, yeah. So I, I don't think this would preclude that kind of thing. Not if we do a decent job of writing it or pulling it in.
Yeah, and I had a similar sort of line of questioning on that too, or, or question that line of questioning, but um yeah, I've been hearing from homeowners around here that, you know, I mean, obviously like the, the standards have changed, maybe, or we, we should be in line with the standards of what, you know, insurance companies are going to people's houses now and it's easy for them to bring drones out and say, hey, that tree's pretty close to your house. Uh, where they didn't have that technology before, it flew under the radar, like not, not to make another pun, we're doing great at that tonight. Um, but yeah, there, there, there is definitely, you know, people I've talked to, or it's, you know, that, that tree was, is, is a mature tree. It's very close to their house, could be fire, could be, you know, um, you know, damage of falling on a neighbor's house, that kind of stuff. And I'm just wondering, like, how does that how does that play into our planning standards? Like it needs to be ten feet from the house, or, you know, like, you know, do we not have that standard before? Or has the standards changed? And how much do the insurance companies get to tell us what to do and that kind of stuff?
So, uh, currently in your, your ordinance, you have exceptions for diseased, distressed, and trees that present a hazard. I can't, can't see us writing a code that doesn't have some exception for those circumstances, so that's how it, how it's written up. Uh, I haven't drafted it yet, but it, it, we have to have some out for something like that, so.
All right, cool. So next one, fences and walls. People always have opinions on fences and walls, right? Um, so you do have standards in your code related to fences and walls. Um, and I think we're not recommending sort of wholesale, you know, changing out or replacing those standards. There are some standards related to fences and walls in that model code for small cities that we think are worth potentially pulling into your code, so that is sort of our general recommendation. Um, we had, um, for example, a specific recommendation of for fences along. Um, we had, um, for example, a specific recommendation of, or fences along streets. Uh, that you reduce the maximum height from six to four feet. So they're just not such a visual barrier as you're walking down the street. Um, and that's a fairly typical standard, I would say, in most communities codes that I see. And so Planning Commission had a number of, um, comments. They're generally supportive of, of the approach that staff recommends. But they did have some, um, fairly specific comments. One, they said, you know, look, building a fence is not something that should require some involved the land use process. So make it pretty simple. You know, it could be as simple as you come in and you say, yes, I have seen the city's standards for fences and I acknowledge that and that's how I'm going to do it. But you don't go much beyond that in terms of that process or procedure they have to go through. They also said, try to do something that doesn't require somebody to get a survey if they just want to build a fence. I mean, they may get into it with their neighbors on that, but you wouldn't necessarily need to require that. And then, um, there was, there is a provision in some of those model requirements that says, you could have a taller fence. If it's a chain link fence, the idea is that you can kind of see through the part that's between four and six feet. But some of the planning commissioners said, we don't really like that option of a six foot tall chain link fence along the, um, along the street there. Um, and also there's a standard in the provisions we looked at that had to do with the height of the fence in relation to the neighbor's, um, dwelling. And they said, it's not, you shouldn't let the neighbor dictate how tall your fence gets to be. So take another look at that provision. And then the last thing, um, was some comments about retaining walls and potentially applying the same standards to retaining walls in the public right of way that's applied to retaining walls on, um, on private property. So those were the, some of the specific comments we got from Planning Commission on fences and walls.
This is another area where we know that the prices of lumber have increased, right? So how do we reduce those hard costs? I would like to better understand the chain link fences. So if I'm, I'm understanding that correctly, not allowing six foot chain link fences at all? Or like, I want to better understand that.
Well, yeah, so in the provisions that we, um, provided and reviewed, um, with Planning Commission, I think you've got the same ones in your packet. One of the provisions says for fences along streets, and make sure you correct me if I get this wrong, um, that the height's limited to four feet unless it's a chain link fence, and then it can be six feet tall. With the idea being, well, you can see through that portion that's between the four and the six feet. Yeah, or it could be, uh, yeah, a transparent fence.
I hear that, but I think if it goes back to reducing a hard cost, that that's where we should have flexibility because we know that the prices of concrete for even a retaining wall or the prices of lumber have risen and will continue to do so. So I agree with a majority of this, but where can we potentially be flexible and think about more cost effective fences? So some level of standardization, but again, not too restrictive because we know that this is a piece where a cost comes in and it could add more cost to the developer in the end.
Isn't it, this is discretionary, like a homeowner can decide to do this. It's not something we're requiring. So a developer wouldn't have to install this, but I appreciate that you're forward thinking about like for homeowners, how much is this going to cost? But, um,
I think the point that Planning Commission is making, maybe I'm wrong, is they do not want to allow people to put up six foot channeling fences because they don't like the way they look.
Yeah, that was the comment. And particularly not so much even between yards as along the street. Sort of in your front or side yard that's adjacent to a sidewalk. And yes, I think that was where the comment was coming from.
I hear that, but I also don't like that they don't like it, so therefore we shouldn't have it. I think that if a property owner says, hey, I can only afford a chailing fence, that we have to be flexible about that. Or a developer, for example, I just, this is an area where it can reduce a hard cost and I think that we should be open to other options, given that we are in a time where things continue to rise in pricing.
Ben?
I agree with Councilor Rivera.
Doug. Does that mean you can have a six foot wood fence in your front yard?
No.
No. Everything's got to be, yeah, so, so we're just talking about, so I guess, I guess, like, so, so I guess knowing that, right? It's, you know, um, are we, are we talking about like the look of something that's tall in the front yard? You know, because we can't allow wood. So is it like, you know, so I'm just trying to understand, like, you know, I understand the look of channeling fences, but are they okay with a four foot channeling fence in front of your yard?
I, I think the point is having a six foot tall obstruction in your front yard next to your house without a permit along the street line is the issue. Not that it's, not that it's, uh, board on board or whether that it's vinyl or that it's, it's chain link. It's a sick, out to the front yard, next to the sidewalk which you walk, having a six foot tall fence presents an issue. Presents a bit, it's, it's not the, not, not so much the material type. So in those circumstance, I think we are looking at the recommendation of reducing whatever it is to four feet. So that you don't have a visual, a six foot visual obstruction in your, in your front yard or along the sidewalk to where, which you walk next to and you walk next to a a chain link fence or a board on board fence that's six feet tall, it gives a certain feel. So.
And that could be the way the address is coming is, is not prohibiting a certain type of fence, just the height and not having an exception allowed for that height. Right now, that draft provision provided an exception to the four feet if the fence was chain link or some other kind of transparent or mainly transparent fence. If you just keep it to four feet and say you can make it out of all these materials and you kind of cover it up.
I think also the issue that mentioned, the fence would be a requirement regardless of who installs it. So it's fences for homeowners, fences for developers, it would, it would all be the same. We cannot, we cannot change it based on, we cannot bias it based upon, if you're a developer, it's one standard. If you're a homeowner, it's a different standard. It's just the fence regardless, regardless.
No.
No.
And is this the right of way? Like in the public right of way, like I wanted to put a six foot fence to you from your house, you could do that, right? It's just not, because it's not obstructing the view from the street, like people still see.
These are, we're primarily talking about fences allowed in setback areas, so within a certain distance from the sidewalk too.
So if you wanted to do a six foot fence, we would likely recommend it stays within the setback. Not within, not adjacent to the street, just like if you wanted to expand your house. So by way of sensitivity, it promotes a smaller fence area hopefully than, which would be a lesser expensive fence.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I'm clearly understanding this. There's this house on May Street that I can think of right now that has a big wooden fence right in front of their house. It's on the corner.
Yep.
And I'm trying to understand, I don't know how tall or what the height is for that. That property owner had to submit a permit to build his fence?
No, there's no permits now. There's no permits for fencing at all now, unless if it's under six feet.
So let's say that I wanted to build, I'm, I live in the house on the corner and I want to build a 10 foot fence. Like, what's the process for that?
You would need a building permit for.
I would need a building permit for anything over six feet. Okay, thank you. I understand.
Okay. Hence the six, like why we focus on the six foot requirement, once it becomes seven feet and up, um, you get in the building permit, it has wind load. We have a whole new, we have a whole new standard. So.
And there's including a setback.
Right.
All right. Uh, next one, uh, is outdoor lighting. So in terms of outdoor lighting, um, the current zoning code, um, does include some regulations that are intended to reduce the impacts of outdoor lighting, um, in commercial and industrial zones. However, they're not particularly detailed and in, kind of staff and the team's estimation not particularly effective given the way they're written. Um, we do recommend updating those regulations to include standards that make sure you're shielding light downward and minimizing light trespass, um, onto other properties. We are recommending including some dark skies, present, um, dark skies provisions. But recognizing your, this is a city and some of the dark skies, um, regulations, if they're sort of intended to be applied out in a rural area, they may or may not make sense for this community. But we did hear public comment that, of people saying, hey, we really want to see you implement as much of that, um, as you can. So that's kind of where we're coming from in that we apply the new lighting standards to the kind of full range of zones and uses, not just the commercial and industrial uses. Um, we had a decent amount of conversation with Planning Commission around this one. Um, generally supportive of doing the things I just talked about in terms of shielding light downward, downward, limiting light spillover. We did hear some folks say, look, we are in a city and it might, it's probably hard to fully implement a, a dark sky, um, model ordinance. Um, and also we heard from folks saying, um, really also important to kind of reduce impacts of street lighting onto neighboring properties. And at the same time, recognizing, you know, that's partly being done, um, from a public health and safety standpoint. So, but make sure we're balancing those things to the extent we can. So those were some of the comments that we heard, um, from Planning Commission on that one.
Great.
Can you be explicit about which elements of the dark skies initiatives don't necessarily fit in a city, as you mentioned?
Well, a couple of things maybe. So I guess one would be, um, where you apply them. We're recommending applying these standards to commercial, industrial, mixed use and multifamily development, not necessarily to individual, single homes. So that would be one place that, um, if you're applying and really limiting the number of outdoor lights you have at a, on a, at a single family home, that might be a tough one. It's a tough one to enforce too. Um, you can still say, look, if you have lights out there, they need to go downwards. They're not supposed to go like pointing straight to your neighbor's window. So that's one. And then just some of this, some of the regulations, again, on the amount of light generated by lighting on a given property or within a given area. Those might be challenging to, um, apply in an urban area to some degree.
Yeah, and some, some of that may, uh, make more sense to go through and provide a little bit more detail later. Uh, because this, that list may be extensive to write right now on the spot. Regarding the types of, yeah, regarding the, the type of light, for example, I imagine that the wavelength of light travels differently. Travels differently given the warmth of the light, because that's what light does. Uh, is there any consideration, um, regarding the temperature of said light as well, since we're talking about light?
That, and we're kind of less sure if it's on or not.
I think we, we have, uh, this is actually part of the dark sky, um, approach that I think is pretty easily, and actually clear and objective when it comes to, uh, the, the temperature being between 3,000 and less. It's more the amber colors, um, less the hot blue. You know, high, high intensity, high visibility. Laboratory style lighting. Um, so I think, you know, that's one that's usually easy to pick the color. It's also easier to kind of measure and, and communicate, uh, without having subject matter expert on it.
Thank you, Dustin. I do recall, and I can't remember all the key points, but that Mr. Hendrix, right, the gentleman who was chairing the dark skies, gave us clear examples of like, here's what Sisters is doing, here's what Ben has been adopting. So agree with, with Councilor Poulsen as well. This is another area where we could reduce hard costs and if we are meeting our energy efficient goals, that it could also open somebody up to grant funding from like Energy Trust of Oregon, for example, that can help with some of these costs for specific lighting.
I will never forget driving through Mexico and arriving in Corretoro in that first Coca-Cola machine. Like it was black dark and then all of a sudden like, oh, civilization, like it is different in the city and the county. And I think the dark skies advocacy has been very effective, but it's important to realize the difference in what we're really shooting for and imagining. And it's black dark out on Methodist Road, but you know, not so much on cascade and what's the right balance? It's not, it's not a slam dunk in my view. Eight, nine. No, sorry. Go ahead.
Nine and 10.
Yep.
So we get to finish that. Well, there'll be like a few other comments, but the last two items are related to parking. Always fun to talk about parking. So we'll talk first about residential parking standards and then we'll talk about non-residential parking standards. So in terms of residential parking standards, just kind of a quick overview of what you require now. You currently require, and this is off street, the number, and it's minimum, right? It's the minimum number of off-street parking spaces you require for different types of residential uses. So currently it's two spaces each per unit for single family dwellings, duplexes and townhouses and one and a half spaces for each, uh, multifamily unit. And I think if you want to talk about a place where you can reduce hard costs, the amount of parking requirement is kind of right up there with, I don't know, most things in terms of where you can reduce costs because it requires land to, um, indoor structures to put in the parking. So, and I will say that this has been, you know, an issue that's gotten a lot of attention of the state in terms of, for larger cities mandates to reduce, um, minimum parking requirements in different areas and for different types of uses. So we, um, are recommending, well, we didn't come in with a recommendation on this one. We wanted to sort of set the table and ask for, um, suggestions on this one. So when we talked to the Planning Commission about this, they were, um, they did recommend reducing the minimum number of spaces for certain types of residential uses, pretty much for, um, all the things that are often referred to as, um, uh, middle housing, so complexes, townhouses and single family or single unit dwellings. They recommended reducing those to one space per unit. And they recommended going to one space or possibly fewer, um, for multifamily units, um, or multi-unit dwellings, apartments essentially. And to think about, um, tying the number of spaces for those types of developments to the size of the units. Could be to the average size of the units within a development. And we also just want to acknowledge that, um, you, one, can't require extra spaces for ADUs and two, um, there's a state requirement that's applied to Hood River to reduce the number of those spaces for one per unit. In that case, so that's my overview.
Madison and Anna.
All that.
This is one where you'll hear me say, with the exception of multifamily housing, like apartments, where I think the requirement should be zero. We know and we've heard from plenty of, of, of builders, developers, that the concrete that only adds to more complexity, this back and forth between staff. And, and my recommendation for all of these, with the exception of those apartments is that it should be zero, that we should continue promoting, um, multimodal mobility here, walkability and whatnot. So I will, I, I think we should reduce this to zero.
Anna.
Um, I, I can appreciate that the purpose of reducing to one or to zero is to help reduce those costs, but I think that it would, an unintended consequence of, of that policy will be a lot of congestion on the streets because we have households now that have multiple vehicles that don't fit within their already required parking spaces. And unless we are doing something else in tangent with this, where we aren't requiring, um, parking, where we're providing public transportation and the multimodal, like, like you're saying, um, you know, increasing pedestrian safety and bike safety. Uh, I, I think that that might be irresponsible. I think we have to think about that because we're, I, I live on a street where there are a lot of parking all the time and there's not, um, there's patchwork sidewalks to nowhere. And everybody walks in the middle of our street and when people rip around that street because it's wide and there's kids walking there, riding their bikes, it is super dangerous that there's cars parked there all the time. Like, I, I think we have to be cautious about that. I, I do appreciate that we need to reduce the costs and this is an opportunity to do that, but an unattended consequence is going to be a ton more cars parked on our streets.
I agree with Anna. Zero is a bridge too far for me. Grant.
I agree with both Councilor Rivera and Councilor Caballero at the same time and think we can do both. Um, over time, it's going to take a big lift, but I would, uh, be supportive of us doing both.
I should have been more clear of like, yes, zero should be definitely something to be considered. But if, for whatever reason, they want to create more spaces, then they absolutely have the autonomy to be able to do that.
Well, that, that was never the question, right? Like, we're never going to tell, you know, you made four, that's, you're not allowed. Like this is the minimum, not less than. Right.
Yeah, and we, we are talking about the minimum. I, as developers go through and build units, I would expect a number of them to still include. I would expect a number of them to still include parking of some form or fashion naturally anyway. There would be a natural expectation among buyers to park their vehicles somewhere. And if I ideally, the, 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 the market wants to park their vehicle in a garage as opposed to store their gear. The building community, I imagine, would include a lot of that in their designs and incorporate that into their, their build process. However, uh, I agree with Councilor Rivera that we necessarily should not make that a hard requirement, uh, because um, I, I agree with her on the aspirations that we should be, uh, going towards.
And I kind of feel like the multiple car spill over kind of thing, um, there are other ways for us to deal with that. I mean, um, kind of feel like people have had their cake and ate it too. And regarding, you know, I've had, I feel like having five cars, but also living in the heights, you know? Um, moved, moved to the, the, the county if you want to have fifty vehicles or whatever, you know, we have a ton of space. So I feel like at some point, you know, the, the right of way and, and parking, I think we should, you know, look for ways to reduce it, you know? I don't know if zero is the right answer or if it's point five or whatever. I, I think it should not be an impediment to, you know, that type of usage, but I don't want it to be conflated with like people parking on the street all the time, you know, whether that's having parking permits or, or something like that to, to decrease that kind of stuff. It, it's, it's, I think it's complex, but, um, it, it, it does get in my craw a little bit. The, uh, I have, I have, uh, you know, gear storage here. And since we started allowing, you know, cars parked, uh, you know, one, one, used to be that we, I think we required cars be parked next to each other. Now, like, you know, they can be parked sort of one space to one space in the back. And that, you know, um, you will see, you know, something, nothing in the garage, one, one parked on, uh, in the driveway and one on the street, right? So they're not using both parking spaces that we required anyway. Um, because they can just easily park on the street and it's problematic in a way, you know? I don't have an answer. I'm just saying.
Um, I just want to say I definitely support reducing the requirements. I don't know if zero is a good idea, but I'm definitely good with one. Um, and maybe even less for the, the apartments, multi-unit. But I'm open to zero, but I definitely think less is good. And I think that we're all pretty much on, well, I'm much fine. It seems like everybody else is saying that.
Okay.
All right. Now we'll talk about, uh, parking requirements for non-residential uses, so commercial parking standards in particular. So outside of the waterfront district and the downtown, um, you allow applicants to basically tell you how much, uh, parking they want to provide for their businesses, for commercial developments. And so you don't have kind of numer- numerical standards in those cases for how many parking spaces need to be provided for a business. You say, y'all can tell us, um, how much you want to provide and that's what you get to provide. So that's kind of maximum flexibility, right? For businesses. It's ends up being, um, a lot of work for our staff in terms of figuring out, does that seem like the right amount of parking to provide? So the question here is, do you want to do what I will say most communities around the state do? And have some numerical standards, um, for commercial businesses? And, and that could apply to industrial businesses as well. And they tend to be written as X number of spaces or, um, A space per X, X thousand square feet of, of building space. So that's how most communities do this. And, and so the standards vary depending on the use. You know, it's a different number of spaces you got to provide for a restaurant versus, uh, let's say a shoe store or something like that. So, um, so that's a question. And in terms of just what we heard from the, um, planning commission, I think there is sort of general support for adopting some numerical standards, but still giving people the option to come in and make the case for, you know what? We don't actually need all those spaces that you're requiring with that numerical standard and here's why. Um, and so that you retain that flexibility in that way. You give people the ability to do that. There is also kind of a question about, um, revisiting, or there were some comments about revisiting the, the in-lu parking fee, um, for different districts. We're thinking about how the fee is set. Um, so there was some conversation about that. Anything you have to add on that last bit?
Nope.
All right. So, yeah.
Can you just clarify? Did you say this is specific to commercial development outside of downtown in the waterfront? Because there's already requirements for those two zones.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that commercial parking is something that a business should be thinking about what is sufficient for what they have. We have all heard public, the public talking about a certain development that's taking place downtown and that there isn't going to be enough parking. So I think being really clear for a business like that, that they need to provide enough parking for whatever number of occupants that they believe will be on site. I think the in-lu parking is good for a smaller business, right? That we don't want to prevent a thriving economy and that we do want to have people shopping at these local areas. So I appreciate that you're all talking about some flexibility, but I think we do need to have more specific language for larger commercial buildings. Parking, commercial parking.
Yeah. And, you know, thinking about, you know, some past proposals for mixed use downtown. I would hate to see, you know, in-lu be too restrictive or requirements be too restrictive to build something like a mixed use. Large, um, you know, it'd be nice to have something like this, but we don't, but you know, it's, um, I, again, don't want to make an impediment for, if someone wants to put up an apartment building, um, and whatnot. Um, yeah.
Ben?
Yeah, I like the flexibility of this because the other like unintended consequence I wouldn't want to have is like, we, you know, had a minimum standard that was so high that we're causing businesses to just build big parking lots. They don't need and take up land that could be utilized more efficiently and for something else. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that we need to balance here on this to make sure we get what we want.
I helped build a medical building in the heights and was amazed by the amount of parking that the partner said we needed. And he was right. Like that park lot is full. So it's not like these people are just crazy when they have like industry standards for how many spaces you need. Grant.
I would suggest we make sure that the, 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 the standards that we set for commercial parking, I believe should be more stringent than residential because generally the demands on commercial are more intense. As we discussed earlier, with conceptually drive-through or drive-in sort of services that may change and the, the demands of those, uh, vehicular needs on a particular pile of land may be different based on each individual industry or business in that particular location. So regarding methodology or a particular business in a particular space, um, I cannot remember the, is it the IT, the, the particular, particular book that has all the traffic calculations? Uh, that's the gold standard in industry.
They, they, yeah, generation, how many trips are generated by different types of businesses and,
Right.
or different types of land uses. And then there are within the model code, I keep referring to standards for the number of parking spaces required for different types of businesses. And I think they generally have, real, at least in part, on that kind of information to generate those standards.
Yeah. So in s- instead of necessarily using a, a more arbitrary X number of spaces per thousand square feet, because there are so many wide variety of commercial and industrial uses, I would be more keen to use a tool more along those lines that's more customized to intensity of use, uh, to determine parking needs as opposed to, um, just a spatial calculation.
Yeah. And, and I will say that that's where those things come from. So that's why for a restaurant, typically there's more spaces required per one thousand square feet than for other types of businesses that don't have as much or as frequent a turnover in the parking spaces or where people aren't there as long. So that's kind of where some of that comes from, but I get the, I understand the.
Right. So, you know, we've, we've talked about taking up a thou- thousand square feet and then multiplying it by whatever that multiple is, for example.
Yeah.
So X is your square footage multiplied by Y and then coming up with that.
Right.
Uh, a multi-variable equation, it's just one square footage equation variable.
Well, you, you get the square footage, but there, that square footage changes by the intensity. So there, there is, there is a demand influence that makes the division. Now, your downtown is different because there was a choice there to take downtown as, as a mall, like a mall mentality of downtown, all its components, high and low equals the amount. So a higher intensity user downtown doesn't really change from a low intensity because downtown parking demand is considered as a unit. And that's, that was, that was a special choice based on a district approach, which is a little different. You could do that for the heights, you could do that for, or whatever district that you define. Or you, you know, or you could just do per, per user too. So PGM is the parking generation manual through IT. Just.
Yeah. So a, a concept like that where we perhaps look at it as granular as we wish, see the citywide or district wide in that example. Um, and us and future city councils evaluate, uh, parking demands or need in that context. I think makes more, makes, makes sense in this case.
Is there a risk there that somebody builds it for a medium demand business? And then that tenant leaves and the new tenant is a high demand business and we're, we're underbuilt?
I, I, I imagine that that would be a risk and we would ask staff to, uh, to figure out a way to alleviate that risk.
Well, certainly your parking consultants would say you should continuously monitor parking and do demand analysis regularly to understand how the world was changing. So, you know, that's, they, they always want you to do parking studies and continue to do this. That's actually one of the recommendations is don't expect to let this type of analysis sit on the shelf for a decade and have it remain relevant. You should be, should be monitoring it.
Well, you're talking about the world changing. I'm just talking about when I, I built for a sub shop and it turns into a eye clinic or whatever. And the demand is like totally different for that new tenant.
I think it's more of enough sub shops and eye shops chain up, change over the next couple of years or Waze vehicles or Waymo drives around, you know, that it doesn't have to be a generational thing. It could just be the trend in your downtown.
Thanks for bringing up the, the parking analysis, cause I can't recall the last time that we did one. I don't remember. It's been some time.
Uh, twenty twenty nineteen and twenty twenty was tw- was the, was the last major one for downtown.
But I think that when we are having a, a business that is going to, um, potentially grow, that maybe that's an area where there is some language around, should your commercial business rise, right? Previously, well, that it was before, you should be conducting some sort of parking study to ensure that if you need to build more parking that you're doing, so.
Kevin?
Will you come up, please? Thank you.
To those points, we, we normally will, um, talk to the director and if he sees a challenge, uh, with a new use, go through a change of use review and take a look at whether or not the proposed use is, is going to work with the parking that's available on site. And maybe, uh, with the adoption of a parking demand analysis, that, you know, the new tenant can demonstrate why they think that amount of parking is going to be sufficient.
Thank you. Amanda?
Um, Anna asked earlier about like the downtown and the waterfront have different parking regulations, but the heights does not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there, like, for me, it would make sense to maybe revisit that too because, and especially because we're doing the whole uh, streetscape thing up there too, but it's kind of a similar business district than downtown. It's a lot smaller, but it's kind of, kind of the same.
Maybe on a s- a work plan for a parking management in that district. And that's what we did downtown. We hired on a consultant, we did a comprehensive analysis of the square footage, the demand, the parking rates. And that came out of that was a, the fee and loop program, revisited the amount and I believe it was forty-five strategies to manage downtown, uh, parking include. So it, it was analysis done in context of a, of a bigger study.
Next.
Right. Um, so you made it through the ten. Nice work. There were just a couple of other comments and I've actually mentioned a two out of three of these already, I think. So these are just additional comments that we heard from the planning commission. There was one question about your existing middle housing standards and, um, how we're incorporating that in this updated code. There was a question of, do we need to retain that? Are we just kind of taking those standards and moving them into other sections of the code? Um, so that was a comment and kind of a question for us. And it's definitely something that we are, we're, I think the response was, we're not going to lose those standards. Those standards we, that you adopted related to middle housing are going to be essentially retained. Maybe there's some tweaks to them. Um, but we're not going to lose them. And we are thinking, we actually talked earlier this afternoon in our staff kind of teamwork session, different strategies around this comment. Just, you know, how do we structurally or from an organizational perspective, incorporate those standards in the updated code? And that's part of like that next step of producing a consolidated code. So there was that. And then these other two things I think I've already talked about, just again, making sure, that we are addressing standards for our commercial projects that include residential uses, so those mixed use standards. And then I already talked about the kind of trespass of light from, um, public street lights onto private properties. So talked about those. So those were the other things that kind of came up in those conversations.
Thank you. I think some of what we have chatted about today will only help strengthen some of the middle housing standards. Um, specifically if there are those pre-approval appointments where all of this information is looked at, that can speed up the process. That's something that has been brought up in the past. In addition to that, I really appreciate this effort. I know that we're not done with all of this work. But as we have been discussing, how are we evaluating the effectiveness of this moving forward? Where can we identify those bottlenecks? And then how are we discussing around where do we change? When we see that this has created an unintended consequence, an unintended barrier? And then at the same time, we are looking at parking, we are looking at the TSP to ensure that it all aligns and that we don't have, things that are contradicting each other, that make it challenging or add another barrier to more diversified housing. So I think I, I appreciate this process, but that we should be really intentional about what does that, what does that look like? How does that fit into our work plan? We don't necessarily need to review everything, but where are those trends that we, we know continue to cause barriers?
Anna.
Um, I had just a thought and I appreciate that I am new to how this all works and what the process is and stuff. But, um, as I was reviewing this and I've reviewed other modules, I'm kind of curious as to, you know, why we haven't gone this approach of like, what do we picture our community looking like in five years or 10 years or 20 years? And then thinking about, like, looking at these suggested revisions through that lens. And this second bullet, and you kind of like, you mentioned mixed use, like, if, if we are putting the energy into this, and I appreciate, like, again, it says that this isn't supposed to be a policy discussion, but what I want to talk to my ca- my, my fellow counselors about is, um, the way mixed use works today is we have a C2 zone and you get a conditional use to have uh, like residential and, um, and, and a retail or whatever business together in C2, which is also where hotels fit and everything else. I, I looked this up and like in other cities in Oregon and other places around the country, there are actual mixed use zones. And while we're doing this, I don't know why we're not looking at, like, looking at this map of what we envision our community to look like and saying, you know what? In this like module or this node of transportation, we want to have apartment buildings with a little corner store where people can walk to the store and they don't need to have fifty million parking spots because people walk there. It's a neighborhood bodega type of a thing. Like, I, I, I just, it seems to me like this should be a little bit more comprehensive and we can be talking about like, and I appreciate that this is a much bigger lift to say, we're going to change the zone of, we're going to have commercial zoning here or what, uh, you know, Councilor Dickey just said about in the heights. You know, if future businesses want to come there, are they going to have to justify the amount of parking spots there are? Or can we create an overlay there that says, this is the parking that's there, but we want to have walkable businesses? This is the place that we want people to walk and ride their bikes to and come and hang out and have a beer or do whatever. Like, like that's the kind of community that we're trying to build. Um, that's the biggest thing. I, I think I just said, you know, why are we not incorporating mixed use into this code revision? Um, that's the biggest thing. I, I think I just said, you know, why are we not incorporating mixed use into this code revision? And um, I, 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 I know that that's a lot more work for you guys to be like, okay. I just feel like we're taking this square page and hammering it into a round, what you want our, our group of community to look like. And this is an opportunity.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And as I look at the next steps, you know, we're gonna have another conversation in January and February. And then we're gonna have public hearings in May and July. And I think that's a key piece that's missing. Is, you know, when we all close our eyes, like, what do we envision? And then again, how does that tie into the T S P and the parking? And all the other pieces that we need to get aligned to do that, you know, in, in certain cities across the, the U S there. They don't have single family homes in a specific area, right? And so how do we leverage what we see working in other cities that are very similar to Hood River, for example? And how do we talk about mixed use and when are we gonna talk about that? I think that's the, you know, big juicy part of the discussion that, that I agree is missing. And that we need to be really clear about giving that direction to staff so that they can incorporate that. You know, use your expertise and leverage that, but we, be really intentional that we are looking at having a more innovative lens than what has been done. Because we see that we are not getting housing. We are not getting the housing that we wanted. It's displacing families. We have individuals or young families that aren't able to, to live here. So I think we have a lot of current data that we could pick from, that helps us understand what are our current barriers. And that talking specifically more about the zoning and what zoning is allowed where, especially in the west side where it is. We have a, a, an incredible opportunity to do unlock more housing there. This all helps that. But I think we need to specifically talk about zoning.
Uh, uh, yeah, I mean, since we're having this discussion, um, uh, yeah, I mean, you know, the. Uh, the, 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 I mean, I've lived in a lot of different places that, that are larger than, than Hood River. That, that, but everybody has the same sort of needs if you want to have a thriving community, right? And it's, um, if you think about the, the kids that, that are growing up here now, where would they go to next, right? Where's the transitional housing? And it used to be that there was enough single family homes around here that. You know, whether you were getting your first home or splitting a place, like everybody I know that worked in the service industry used to like, you know, everybody. Had a bedroom and that's how they made things happen without apartments or condos or townhomes or mix. Use or cottage clusters or anything. And, you know, we can see demonstrably that, you know, the population of Hood River under the age of nineteen is going down and, and all that. So, yeah, I mean, I think, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, this, there's, we have a lot of things that we're, we're doing to, to address that. But yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear from staff at some point about, you know, what could we do to ensure? Um, if there is an impediment like not having a mixed use zone, like that was just brought up or something like that. We know, we, we definitely want to know that because I think we're all on the same page about uh, increasing the, the, the diversity of the types of housing that we have. Um, available.
All told. Dustin, did we do it?
We got what we needed from this one.
Thanks, John. Good job.
Thank you.
But wait, I feel like I still want to understand, like, when are we gonna talk about zone? We all brought it up. I think, you know, you got a thumbs up from me, from Amanda, from Grant, from, you know, from all of us, like.
So, so for this, for the, you, you did direct us to do mixed use in that. So I wouldn't be concerned that that's not gonna show up. That was in a module you discussed and directed that, and I think I had mentioned that earlier. But by way of revisiting the entire map and the future vision of the city, that's a comp plan. You know, that's a comp planning exercise. That's not a, that's not a fix your operational code exercise. So we would want to scope that. Th- that's not within this, this aspect. So you will have a use table and you'll get to pick, you know, to some extent, some refinements within your zones of. You know, do we want to move this to permitted use? Do we want to make these subject to standards? There's gonna be some movement there, but in terms of the grand division, you know, we have a comp plan vision that is adopted that I can give to you. That provides some guidance, but if you want to revision. The image of the city and its future cast in the biggest way, that, that's a comp plan exercise and a public outreach exercise. That is a little different.
I want to revisit, revision what that looks like and that we're engaging community.
Great.
Agreed.
Agreed. I just, I guess I want to understand whether um, I have this discussion with my husband when I'm revisioning our home and like remodeling our house. Of like, is this zone code update, like um, remodeling the bathroom that we're gonna end up tearing out? Is, you know, how much, like, and, and it's not that I'm saying, hey, we have to stop everything. It's just. Like, what is the logical order of things? Like, how much are we investing in, into this progress when it might just get completely redone? And we're going like, or does it overlap, like?
There'll be, there will be an overlap from the top, the long, I would call it. If you're looking at a comprehensive planning effort, that is, that's a long. Long, long reaching effort. We still need to operate this, this business and operation day to day. And we've identified a broken code that makes every day, while, while you're reimagining and the community is having a really wide reaching investment. Of what are we gonna be when we grow up? Still gotta manage the permits that come in here. Otherwise, those real-time developers are going and homeowners are gonna have real-time issues, so.
Well, but I guess I'm saying it was the code that we're fixing right now based on the comprehensive plan that was done, I, when was that done?
I mean, it was, it's, it's been updated up and through twenty twenty-one. So the comp plan has been updated over time. Is, is it lagging behind? Yeah, but we took enough time to update this that we had some real unlawful. We have real things that I cannot enforce and, and so it's deferred maintenance to the point where it just needs to be done. And if you end up tearing out parts of this bathroom in the future, then I think that, I think that's what we have to do. You just can't operate dysfunctionally.
It's also important to note that.
Hold on, we're on red, hold on. Say again, state law.
Uh, it's important to note that some aspects of our code are not in compliance with state law. And so those we definitely need to address now and that's a big part of, of the motivation to do this work.
Doug and then Gladys.
I, I know that when we, we had, we sort of had this discussion when we were talking about setting work goals, you know, over the, the course of the tenure that I've been involved with the city council here. Um, I, I, I know, I know it can feel like it's out of order, but it, like, to, to their point. Um, there are things that we have to do in this code that have to be updated. Um, I think there's cool stuff that's happening in module three that's addressing what we're all talking about. But yeah, like a, a comprehensive plan overhaul is, is a huge undertaking. I think maybe we should all talk about going there at some point. But like, I wouldn't want to shell something like this that it's sorely needed to. The, the, it, the sequence of events might be a little haphazard, but it's not like we have to tear this all down after we do that. There's a lot of stuff that has to be corrected in this.
Gladys.
Um, Dustin, I, I hear everything that you're saying. We need to update what we have so that you can be able to functionally operationize on a day-to-day basis. The last time that we did update this plan was in twenty twenty-one and I believe I was the only one that was on council at that time. So I think part of what I discussed earlier is like, how often are we revisiting this? Maybe having a brand new council is enough to warrant what, what do you, we all revisit that was done prior? Because we all think different than the previous council that was available. Do I understand it's a significant amount of work and it's something that we'll need to continue weaving into the conversations of when we should discuss this? But I think you're hearing from all of us that we want to get into the specifics and that, you know, we, we look to you on. How do we build that simultaneously so that we're not contradicting what we're doing now to the larger picture? I appreciate all your time and effort and yours and everybody.
Specifically related to this, yeah, I'm not, this, this work needs to get done as planned, as scoped, as scheduled. Um, need to wrap this up, get this done. The, the overarching comp plan discussion, I see as. The next step or progression from this perhaps, um, so. I definitely am in agree with that. We should still pursue it. Um, the, and then. Tangent, just briefly, uh, did you receive, uh, yeah, the necessary instruction from us that you needed regarding the fence thing? Regarding fences?
I think so.
So I think we talked about, but I just can't remember if we provided you adequate instruction. Sorry, it's on tangent, by the way.
I, I think we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, we got, we got what was necessary to move this to more refined code language.
Thanks. Um, but yeah, getting back to the uh, bigger picture stuff. Um, this work, uh, and the under, underpings beneath it, um, that relies on the comp plan. That relies on all the other foundational documents that we have, um, and all the underlying assumptions that go along with it. Uh, I believe that we are all generally in agreement that there are underlying assumptions that we want to address next. So, um, I, I believe that's, that's what we should be doing.
I don't want to argue, but in the interest of the dialectic. On the pinboard in Abigail's office are the like goals and the projects and the, I don't feel like any of them says comp plan. And are we gonna instead of those, like, start doing the, like, I just wanna, yeah.
Well, there's the.
Sorry, Grant and then Gladys.
And this is certainly something we can bring up when we have our strategic check-in in a month. Um, and we can debate at that time because that's not that far from now.
Does every, did we talk about the January tenth possibility? Is that, yeah, Abigail?
No, I haven't shared that. You and I just talked about that last week and today my first day back in the office, but uh. No, I've not even shared that with staff.
Okay, uh, Gladys.
Yeah, I would, uh, councillor Polson and I are on the same page and I'm looking at our current work plan right now. And the second bullet point is like the work continues, so I would assume that this, that we're discussing right now, comp plan would follow within. The work that continues, but absolutely should be really clear about what have we completed on our current work plan? So that we understand what is coming off, what are we putting on?
All told?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Steps I already talked about, so.
Great. Great, good job, everybody. Thank you for, Dustin, yeah? All right, that takes us to ordinance twenty ninety-three and twenty ninety-four. Jen.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty ninety-three by title only.
So moved, moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Polson.
Councillor Stapina?
Yes.
Councillor Calvi- Cavalieri?
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell?
Aye.
Councillor Polson?
Aye.
Councillor Rivera?
Aye.
Councillor Gkey?
Aye.
Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty ninety-three, um, and ordinance amending title to administration personnel, chapter two point three six, city. Uh, planning commission of the Hood River municipal code by updating membership qualifications to comply with O R S two two seven point zero three zero.
Ordinance twenty ninety-three has passed its second and final reading and will become law in thirty days.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first and possible second reading of ordinance twenty ninety-four by title only.
Because we are seven, we can do first and second, right? Moved for first and second, moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Rivera.
Councillor Gkey?
Aye.
Councillor Rivera?
Aye.
Councillor Stapina?
Aye.
Councillor Calvi- Cavalieri? Councillor Mitchell?
Aye.
Councillor Polson?
Aye.
Uh, your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty ninety-four and ordinance amending Hood River municipal code, title twelve, public utilities, chapter seven. System development charges, section twelve point zero seven point zero nine zero. To comply with that affordable housing projects with state or private funding are eligible for system development charges exemptions.
Ordinance twenty ninety-four has passed its first and second time reading, uh, will become law in thirty days. Thank you, Jen.
Abigail.
Thank you, mayor. I think city manager comments, is that right?
Yes, sorry.
Excellent. Losing track. Um, just a couple of quick things. I think, um, you heard. Um, our folks say today that development code kind of question of the week or a question of every other week is coming out. So I will send you all the link to that. I think it's on the development website right now, but I think starting shortly soon, we'll be coming out on our social media and other pieces. And then when all the questions are out there all at once, then I think we'll send something out to all the email, to our email list to, to say, you know, please. Um, give comments on these. This is the start of our community engagement part of this. And I really would appreciate all of your help to amplify that message when, um, that starts coming out. Um, and then of course we'll have a focus group and interviews, but this is kind of the general, um, the best opportunity for the general public to give us feedback on the code. So watch for that. Um, planning commission is meeting on December first. That will be the Marriott project. We anticipate lots of, um, interest and attention on that, so be aware. I think we, um, we sent out to anyone who had given comment, uh, back in August when it was first going to be. So I think we have about a hundred and thirty people receive direct mailings, plus of course, um, media. I think there's been a little bit of energy and intention. I'm very anxious about where I might put a lot of people. And we're definitely talking about what the technology and the seating might look like, um, but just know that that is next Monday, December first.
Gladys.
I wanna make sure that I, um, at our last meeting where this was discussed, we were advised not to attend, right? So is that still the case, not to attend, but we can watch the recording?
I think, I mean, it's a public meeting. I think, uh, the concern for all of you is if something were to be appealed and it would come to you. Um, you know, do you have ex parte contact? Did you get information or knowledge that you would like, that could influence your decision that you did not? You know, not received through official means. So Dan isn't here, but I can ask him to also give you a little bit of clarity on that. Uh, and then, um, for events, and I'm guessing it's the first Friday, but I was just trying to verify the, uh, date. But I think the tree lighting is traditionally the first Friday, um, so I hope that you all be here and keep your fingers crossed for good weather. So.
Jackie, Jackie sent something out about staff, staffing the table and stuff. So the, I, I've gotten a, a city thing that said it was Friday.
Great. Um, and I don't know if folks have responded to her, but we, the city has traditionally had a, um, a table at the event. So if you all are, if any or all of you are available to at least take a small shift on that, that would be great. Um, and then at our last meeting, um, we had talked about ICE and I think, um, I've shared a little bit, you know, with you. You heard from representative Dexter today, but just, I thought I would grant me just a couple of minutes to just kind of go through some, uh, quick talking points. Um, I know you all know this, but it's always helpful to share publicly, um, first just to acknowledge, you know, there has been harm and, and fear in our community. And, um, you know, we, I think you have all talked about the limits that we can do as city government, but it's important just to even acknowledge that that's there. And we're all in this together. Um, the city is an inclusive, uh, place that strives to be safe and welcoming to everyone regardless of immigration status. You council have taken a number of actions and made statements, um, really trying to remind people of that. And you also know that the city in every way can, fully complies with Oregon sanctuary promise laws. And we always talk about that in general with law enforcement, but it also goes to any other city, um, resources. So like, we could not, you know, close off a parking lot and let ICE use it for immigration activities. Or, uh, you know, let them use this space for registration or something like that. It is really any kind of city resource, staff, um, equipment, um, our property, uh, for, for, um, immigration activities. Now, that doesn't mean I can't, you know, that ICE is not, ICE agents are not allowed to come to a space, like this is our courtroom. Uh, it is a public space. Anyone can come to it. I cannot deny an ICE agent access to our public spaces. But city resources, um, personnel, staffing, um, cannot be used for, um, engagement. With, uh, sorry, uh, enforcement of federal immigration laws. So that's an important part of the sanctuary promise law that we don't often talk about because we often are very, very focused on the law enforcement. Um, other things, just thinking about, uh, enforcement, um, you know, city police, um, nor other staff. We don't ask about immigration status. Um, we don't, uh, cooperate or work with ICE unless we have a judicial warrant. Um, and then of course, the flip side of that is ICE doesn't let us know when they're in town. We, we find out when the public does. And we often find out from the same social media sources that other people do. Um, other small things are, um, Hood River Police Department members, our officers will always identify themselves. You know, they are wearing uniforms, they are driving marked cars. For the most part, you will know it is a police officer. They have their names and actually their blood types on their vest. Um, if, you know, they have cards to hand you. So, you know, if anyone ever has any question, um, they are very clearly police officers. Um, another thing that has, uh, that the city doesn't have, but I think it's worth articulating is that we don't have traffic cameras. You know, sometimes people see, you know, like on Second and Oak, they think that's a traffic camera or a plate recorder. We don't have any of those in the city. Those are usually sensors for the lights. Um, but I know some cities in Oregon and Washington do have like flock cameras and a number of them have turned those off. I think Woodburne and Eugene, Springfield, and then. And then Skamania County, I shared some flock camera information with you several months ago and how they were protecting their information. They have now made the decision to turn off their flock camera equipment. Um, so because of, uh, I think Washington ruling that those could be considered public records and available for requests. So. Those are, um, some of the things are kind of happening, not specific to the city, but are around. Um, Chief Holstein, Lieutenant Shaley and I have attended meetings with, that have been convened by the next door. Um, with, there's been about 50 people at those meetings. So, um, from, you know, um, all over the region, just, uh, trying to coordinate and work together. Um, about ICE and, and do some training for each other and some staff. Visit Hood River has been reaching out to local businesses to explain what their rights are. Um, as private businesses with private property, they're, they're, they have more rights. Um, and more ability to limit who can enter their, uh, places of business. So Visit Hood River has been working on that. They're also working on a video. I think I should do that with you. Um, and then, uh, you received in your packet, Representative Dexter's one pager. Um, and, um, I shared that out with the next doors group that has been convened. So that was here with most of the agencies in our area. Um, and we will look for other ways to, um, put that on, um, including on our website. I think you said that, Counselor, and I was looking at our website and it needs a little bit of updating. So. Thank you for letting me just give you a quick bit of update. I think the one other piece, I think I said it before was. That I can't think of any city activity you need to do. Except maybe like pick up some signs or something, um, that require you to come into the city. So if you get a ticket, you want to participate in a meeting, you need to pay your bill. All of those things can be done remotely. And we've been trying to advertise that out to people, um, with a video by our, um, our court clerk, uh, in English and Spanish. Um, just explaining like, talk to us and we will find other ways to accommodate you if you, um, are not comfortable coming into a city business on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Anything else under your, under your remarks today?
Uh, not for today. Thank you.
Committee reports?
Region one act meeting is December 1st. Don't have the agenda yet. They usually don't put it out at the last minute. So, uh, should be out shortly after Thanksgiving, I think. Um. Hood River Parks and Rec has an open house on December 10th at 6:00 P. M. At the Hood River Middle School Cafeteria. Regarding the new pool concept. Bonding and all the other stuff that the Hood River Parks and Rec is up to. So family would like to go December 10th at 6:00 P. M. At the middle school.
Thanks.
Yeah, uh, met with the, uh, the Sister City, uh, Saruda, um, board the other day and, um. Yeah, I mean, it seems like there shouldn't be a lot going on, but there is, you know, just kind of getting ahead of a lot of, a lot of things, uh, you know, really looking for the adult visit for the 50th anniversary on July 5th, 2027. Not specifically that day, but that, like, you know, um, to, they're here for a day, they'll be here longer than that, obviously, but looking for that day to, you know, be more or less the, the celebration. Also talking about, you know, summer 2026 and looking to, you know. For a visit, um. Uh, here as well, or, um, and, or sorry, there as well. Um, trying to figure out if it can be coordinated with the summer festival that's there. Looking towards January 14th of 2026 for like apparent info night for host families. And, uh, yeah, there's, there's a sense of place being planned for 2027 on the Sister City as well. And then in terms of coming here, it'll be March 13th to 19th, I think 20 students are coming here in 2026. So. Uh, planning for like a taste of Saruda week before. Or, or during that. Um, we did do that in tandem last year. It was kind of a lot for them to do. So we're kind of talking about what that might be, but, um, a lot of activity there and. There won't be a meeting in December, but, uh, next meeting is in January.
Did you say the next visit? We will go summer 26?
Yeah, August.
Thank you.
And then they're coming here in March.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gladys, committee?
Uh, thank you. I had an opportunity to, uh, attend the National League of Cities. I am a member of the Hispanic elected officials. Where, um, some of the policies that I discussed earlier with Congresswoman Dexter is something that, um, that committee is, is continuing to. Advocate for stronger language for certain protections specifically around ICE in our communities that we are seeing nationwide. My CAC will meet, MCAC will meet this next coming month, so I will follow up and give you all an update then. What I did have an opportunity to chat with Leslie is. She tuned into our last meeting and heard that we have 110 individuals that are utilizing our utility assistance. Um, she believes that those numbers are low, so I am going to meet with her to validate and verify that information is correct and that. That those resources are being addressed with individuals so that they know we have that resource and how folks can follow up with that process. That's it for committee reports for me. Thank you.
I truly don't want to put you on the spot, Gladys, but didn't, did our warming shelter open in the last like little bit?
Yes, it did. It opened on the 19th, I believe. Yes, thank you for reminding me.
I just was like, wait, I heard about that, but oh, it's the 24th. Okay, great. Uh, Ben?
Nothing from me.
And?
Hit it off.
Nothing from me. Council comments. Anna?
I have some of those. First, I wanted to say, um, I'll make it quick though. Um, I'm, I'm sorry I missed our, our last meeting on November 10th. I watched the video of it and I really appreciate the discussion that was had. I think I, it got me thinking of what can we do? Like, you know, a lot of times, um, we talk about what the issues are, but let's talk some solutions and I have some ideas and maybe they're silly, but I'm just gonna talk to you guys about that. Um. One, uh, I think we should encourage and facilitate communications with our federal representatives. Maxine Dexter is our U. S. House of Representatives, um, representative. Uh, Ron Wyden and Jeff Merkley are our U. S. Senators and we all know who our president is. I feel like if there's an opportunity to provide some links on our website to say. Here's how you contact these people and then just inundate their offices with calls, letters and emails on how their actions or inaction is impacting us. Let's tell them what they will, that, that they will lose their jobs if they aren't accountable to us. And, um, you know, I, I, I wonder if there's a way that we can provide links to their websites or to their contact information to say, um, you know. This is how you contact them. Um, the other idea I had was. Yeah, can the city link to their websites? And then, um, the other idea was like, just. Encourage every individual to take the action in whatever meaningful way they can. Like if it's, um, with the, the SNAP benefits discussion that you all had, like. You know, fill out a form and be a volunteer at FISH. Like, you know, do something yourself as an individual. Um, and that's one of the opportunities we have as council members is to lead by example of like show up and do stuff. And then the other idea I had, uh, was create council office hours or town halls. Um, maybe here at city hall, like we just. You know, this is a silly idea I had of like, we open this room from 10 to two on a Saturday, once a month and say, come talk to us. And right now we're going to be writing letters. And you can drop things off, but besides asking people to come to us, let's go to them. So can we have town halls at next door's office or, you know, a restaurant or wherever that we know people feel comfortable coming. Um, so that they can talk to us about the topics that are important to them. So those are the things that I, I, ideas I had. Uh, the other thing was, um, oh, what, what Grant already, uh, touched on with Parks and Rec. I'm hearing that Parks and Rec have made significant progress in defining their bond and lovey ask, and I would expect that we're going to hear more details on that soon as a council. They are having that third and final community open house as part of its 2025 pool option study. On Wednesday, December 10th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the middle school and the cafeteria. So I, I wanted to highlight that too. Um, and then the last thing. Let me just see. Oh, yeah. Was in the spirit of, of the development code update and our commitment to, um, big A and little A affordable housing. I would suggest that we invite a local developer to come talk to us at a city council meeting about the challenges of a building in the city. And I don't feel like that a three minute comment during the public comment portion of the meeting is adequate to have dialogue. About like what their challenges are and why they're not building. And, um. I think we could learn something from someone who is trying to build housing in our town. And do I have three friends? Yes, I know somebody we can invite and I would like to ask them if it's something that they would be willing to do.
Don't we have outreach happening and after this module though? Like where we're like talking to a bunch of developers and whatnot?
You know, I, I don't know if it's separate than outreach. I just think it's, um, like this is. It's in my mind, this is, maybe it is the same thing, but, um, it's just inviting somebody to come talk to us and say. Here's what I, what is a challenge in my business and, um, you know, this is why building hasn't happened. Cause one of the things I think I've asked. Or maybe I didn't ask for, I thought of asking for was. What are the number of permits that we've seen for housing in the last five years? And how, how are we watching those numbers go down? And not just like permits, but let's see what certificates of occupancy are too. Like. What has been the trend of building? Because, um, in a kind of preliminary conversation about this idea of, of having a builder come and talk to us about this. Um, one of the things I've, I've heard. Here is cost of money is one of the things that's prohibiting development. And when I asked a developer about that, he was like, no. Like money we can get. It's the amount of time it takes to get a project through. And guess what? We can help with that. Like that's something, and that's why this is in the spirit of the code development. So. Like, I, I want all of us to benefit from that insight and, and listen to it with a critical ear and then have a conversation about that and see if that might shape. Um, what we're working on.
I don't really want to talk about that now. Anna brought it up. I'll follow up with Anna. Gladys?
Well, then I guess let's just laugh.
Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've. I mean. Yeah, we don't, we don't have to talk about this now. Um. You know, it's funny. I was thinking about like the parking, uh, thing earlier in terms of silly ideas, but one of the things that's always kind of irked me about, uh. Like the parking situation in this town is that like, at least as soon as you get out of, out of the, you know, kind of downtown core. Uh, there's no lined parking and people park, you know, all over the place and not in an efficient manner. And I don't think we'd ever go in line, you know, residential, you know, streets that are that far out, but. I don't know. That's something that kind of popped in my head is like, man, you know, we could be a little bit more efficient with the way that we. Park on the streets because I. You know, parking is going to be more and more of a premium and that's something that just. Always is kind of, uh, kind of irritated me, but, uh, I have no idea what's, uh, involved with all that or cost or. Why some areas are lined, but aren't, but, um, I don't know. That's kind of something that was just popped in my head.
Thank you. I want to respond to Counselor Cavallari's comment, just so that I, I don't forget. Um, a while back I did. Write an email to Dustin specifically asking for a lot of these data points that we've discussed. So Abigail, maybe you can. Share that email with everybody. Um, I'm still waiting for some of that information, but that is something that, that I specifically asked for and can help a conversation for. When we talk about this next, and I, I think I remember that we'll, we'll bring this back up in January. So that could give enough time for. A developer friend to come and give us their perspective of what they find challenging, um, in our current code and, you know, in our current process. So I wanted to speak to that. Mayor and I had an opportunity to join the Veterans Day, uh, event that took place on the 11th, and this is specifically to. Um, commemorate the Nisei and Nisei communities here in the gorge. It was a beautiful event. I really appreciate all those that put the time and effort into it. There is a quote by Minoru Yasui and there was a card that I, that I snagged and I forgot to bring it, but. It, it was a student, part of the student contest that I'll talk about next, but it said, you know, if it can happen to one of us, it can happen to all of us. And it was just a great reminder how. You know, we still haven't learned our lessons and that we have had. Different diverse communities here suffer immensely. Due to federal policy that, that it takes place. So I appreciate everyone that took place in, in creating that. It was a beautiful event. I do want to talk about the student contest, uh, and I have a little flyer here and can pass this information along. There is a deadline of February 22nd of this next coming year. Um, you can visit the website at. Minoroyasui legacy.org slash student con, uh, student contest. There is a $500 educator engagement award. Um, if you are between ninth and 12th grade. Uh, first place, you get a thousand dollars. Second place is $500. Any fifth to eighth grader. Uh, first place is $500, second place is $250. And essentially you create a card. And if they like it, that's, that's what's being used. So the comment around the card that I saw earlier was from a student. So it was beautiful to see how. Our youth is being involved in these conversations and what they're doing. In addition to our youth, I wanted to bring up an item that we have been discussing that is on our work plan around youth outreach and, uh, continuing to work with. Abigail and staff around how do we engage the high school students? There is a very specific government group that takes place there so that we can have. Another perspective that is given to us, um, from the youth in addition to how can they potentially support? You know, some of these intern opportunities such as social media and whatnot. I want to give a very special thanks to all of those individuals that have been a part of the rapid response. It has been an incredible honor to stand in solidarity with you and Counselor Cavallari, as you were talking about leading by example. I've had the opportunity to join this group and, and we have been actively patrolling our community to identify ICE agents. And I want to talk a little bit about. What I've been seeing firsthand. Because I do want to ask for three friends to help support this next item that I will discuss. There are ICE agents in our community who do not have front and back license plates. And that makes it really hard for us to be able to identify them to a perk line to let them know. So. There are pictures that are being taken, you know, there's an entire process and really grateful for those individuals, but also just really scary how. There is a process that is not being followed and. Right now there's like a free for all at a federal level to. If you're in this position, there's, there's a lot that you, that you can do and that folks are not necessarily being held accountable. But what I will say is that out of this. Um, individuals have been really intentional about taking video when they notice that something illegal has taken place and, and there have been many. Incidences like the license plate example that I brought up where we, we know that, that it's illegal to do what they're doing. Um. So I just want to thank everyone for, for taking the trainings to be able to identify and to be able to follow current processes. Um, thanks to Visit Hood River and the Latino Network for getting those signs out to businesses and community members. Uh, to ensure that folks know if ICE shows up there that they're not welcomed. It is private property. I. Would really like for us to talk about emergency declarations because. Something that we have seen is some of this illegal activity without having police present to then. Create a police report so that our DA could prosecute these individuals and then subpoena that video evidence. We need to have very clear guidance around that. We're not the only state within this, or sorry, we're not the only city in this state that is having the, these conversations around what emergency declarations could look like. Um, Counselor Sapina and I will join a meeting tomorrow afternoon where we are talking to other elected officials in these cities that have been. Uh, hit heavy by ICE being in, in their communities and taking, you know, 40 plus individuals. We do know that in McMinnville, as I mentioned earlier, there was a 17 year old. Child that was taken from the high school racially profiled and is a U. S. Citizen. So I would. Like for us to have discussions around what can we do? What can't we do? And how do we involve our district attorney? I have had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Ellis. Um, and he is in full support of being able to prosecute that, but I think. We, we, I would love to have you all ask any questions that you may have of him around what are the current, what is a current process now? What is the current challenge now that? You know, district attorneys across the U. S. Are facing just because again, the federal protections are. They can, they can create barriers. Um, so would love to. Have three friends support this item so that we can continue having a discussion around. have three friends support this item so that we can continue having a discussion around what is an emergency declaration? And in addition, something that you brought up, Counselor Cavallari, is, is a town hall. You know, we, we have stated in previous meetings that we want to hear directly from community. Having a meeting at a six o'clock, we see that not very many individuals do join, so where can we be flexible and go to the next door or to the food bank on a Saturday, for example, continue to coordinate with our community partners? Folks are scared, so can we create a hybrid option where individuals have the ability to give statements online? Um, so I would, looking for three friends to give me a thumbs up so that we can have this as an agenda item and have a really intentional discussion and continue to give feedback to staff.
Can I, can I give a, a caveat thumbs up? I'm for that, but I'd like us as a city governing body to have our legal counsel give us guidance as to what it is we as a city can be doing and as a body can be doing, because I think what we do as an action as an entity is different than what we decide to partake in a, as individuals. So um, I think, I think we need to have some guidance on that as city council.
Gladys, want the D A at the?
Yes, I would like to have our district attorney at our next meeting. I would also, uh, Dan isn't here today, so he is definitely a key individual that we need to have. Like I mentioned, we're not the only city that's having these conversations. Do we update our ordinances or our, sorry, our current resolutions? You know, do we have an emergency declaration? What would that entail that's different than what, what we're not doing now? Uh, specifically, an emergency declaration would allow for uh the Hood River Police to potentially work overtime if we know that, that illegal activity is taking place outside of somebody's forty, you know, work hour shift and I believe in there we would need one. So yes, I'm not saying we need to have an emergency declaration, but I would like for this to be an intentional conversation on our next agenda where we can talk about options and then decide as a collaborative what we can and can't do.
You all got those thumbs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, Abigail and I'll talk about it.
That's everything for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank Counselor Rivera for all the work that she's doing on this issue. It's one in four members in our community. Um, that's a crisis, that's a emergency and it should be treated as such. And yeah, we don't have a gallery full of people here that are telling us that they're afraid to go out of their homes, right? Um, so I, I think there's, there's a very, very real, real, you know, palpable fear that, that I can feel just walking around in the street right now. Um, and it needs to be addressed. Um, I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, looking forward to continuing to work towards this. I'm looking forward to attending that meeting with Counselor Rivera tomorrow to find out what other cities are doing. Um, I appreciate all the insight from uh, you know, Representative Dexter that we got earlier. It would be like, you know, she offered her phone number earlier. I'd like to get that and keep, keep in touch with her with what we're learning. Uh, as she mentioned earlier, you know, this is really an all hands on deck, every form of government sort of thing, right? Um, I feel really supported all the way up to our representatives in Washington throughout the state of Oregon. Uh, uh, a lot of what we're going to be saying is based on politics, going to be falling on deaf ears, so we really have to take care of it ourselves. Um, and, you know, also like to hear from um uh Representative Dexter that she was looking at the Chicago model. Um, I, I've been doing a lot of reading about what cities can do. Um, one of those things that Protecting Chicago does do, and Abigail, you mentioned it earlier, that list of everything you, you were reading, I want to see it pasted everywhere, right? I want it, I want to see it posted on social media. I want to repost it on social media. Uh, you know, a webpage for us to refer to, that sort of thing, uh, where people can, you know, trust that they're getting good information about what they can do in these situations and um, I, I want, I want the city of Hood River to be a good source for people that are looking for, you know, concrete information about what they can do. You know, I know the city can't stop ICE, but we can inform people, we can stand in solidarity and a lot of things, um, and happy that we're having this dialogue and happy that we're, you know, getting, getting people like Maxine Dexter involved um in, in this discussion and looking forward to learning more about what other cities are doing.
Play change of pace. Um. From the bridge side of things, give you guys a little update on that. Uh, there's the, the bridge was ordered, uh, raised grant a while ago. It's a grant that's focused on uh bike road pedestrian infrastructure. Um, and that has to do with transportation, transportation networks, multimodal transportation. There's going to be an open house at the Hampton on December fourth at five P M. So if you're interested in pedestrian-focused infrastructure, um, how people get across a river without necessarily driving, that's a good event to go to. Um, there'll be a number of commissioners like myself there to listen to folks along with staff. Um, bigger news on the bridge side of things is that the Record of Decision went through when it was finalized and approved. Yay, uh, for, it's a big deal. Uh, a very massive deal, all the environmental stuff, uh, NEPA documents. It's very long, thousands of hours of work. Um, and so massive kudos to staff and the people that worked on that to get that done and signed off on. So what that means is that uh, there are a lot of major hurdles to get that done. We just really, uh, there's a few little permit things to get done in between now and starting construction. But the last big hurdle is securing the rest of funding to go to construction. Uh, we can't go to construction unless we have the funding. So that's the last biggest thing uh we're working on um right now. Yeah, so forward to having our town halls and more of all of the, of outreach to the community and preventing illegal things from happening. Thanks.
I just want to thank Counselor Cavallari and Rivera for all the stuff that you brought tonight during Counselor Commons. I really appreciate all the thought and effort and time that you're putting into this and um, I'm supportive, so. Um, and other than that, I really don't have any.
Anything else for the good of the order? Keyholder Saunders made it all the way to the end.
Don't you miss it? Sometimes.